as a citizen, as an activist, um, working deeply in the House community, and as a mother raising a great son, um, this is the kind of individual that one day we might, we might get there, some of us might get there. Um, I met Fabu forever ago, and when my mom was sick, she stayed with us. So, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Thank you. Um, I think this is a, um, a well-deserved honor for Dr. Fabu. I've known her for many years since I'm, I'm one of those transplants to Madison like a lot of us are. But she's not only had a huge impact on the general community, but a particularly important impact on the African-American community. Um, we always look to her to help us, um, deal with a lot of the issues that we deal with in the Madison community. She's been a champion, not only for the African-American community, but I really think more about the youth of Madison. She's kind of been one of those people who's raised some of my kids out here over the years, even they were young people, encouraging them, um, developing them, and nurturing them. So, I can think of so many young people, uh, in various of my kids' age groups that Fabu has impacted. So, just want to, you know, we love to be able to give you your flowers now, right? And so, um, just want to say how much, you know, we love you. All right? Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vavir?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to begin, as I do at this time every year, by welcoming Pam and Howie Erlinger back to the Common Council. I think it's especially important for our colleagues that were just elected in the last year to know a little about the background of this award that is being awarded this evening to someone so richly deserved, Dr. Fabu Carter. For those that aren't familiar with the background of this award, uh, we lost a real champion in our community back in 2007 at the very young age of 36 years old. Many of us in city government had the real pleasure of working with Jeff Erlinger for many years. He was a champion in particular for improving accessibility for differently-abled people. I, um, got to befriend him and had the honor and privilege of calling him a friend and working with him on a regular basis in his capacity as president of the State Langdon Neighborhood Association. Uh, he is a really, really remarkable person. When he tragically passed, uh, Mayor Dave Chislevich and the council wisely decided to create this honor, um, in his memory. And as probably most all of you are aware, we've continued that memorial even in a more meaningful way in way with the creation of the Jeff Erlinger Accessible Playground at Rannabon Park, uh, just in the last year as well. And I want to thank Pam and Howie for their leadership in that capitol campaign, uh, but moreover, for your commitment, being here each and every year. Pam, for you serving on the award committee year in and year out, uh, and keeping your son's legacy alive, because so many of us really do miss him, uh, very much and, and think about him, um, pretty regularly, actually. With that said, I, I want to congratulate someone that I first crossed paths with many decades ago, and that's Sister Fabu. This is, as I said a moment ago, so richly deserved honor for you, Fabu. Um, as we were reminiscing before the meeting started, uh, we first met each other in UW-Madison student government. Fabu was the smart one and has gone on to accomplish way more. Uh, when I first met her, she was a grad student that arrived in our community, thank goodness, thank God, uh, from the great city of Memphis, as I recall. And, and Fabu always impressed me so much, and I am here to tell you, going back decades and decades, uh, how nasty, believe it or not, student government politics can be. Uh, some of you might have been, been there, uh, done that, uh, here at Madison, for example, but Fabu was always a voice of reason, a voice, uh, you know, an epitome of civility in public discourse. So, um, as the years have progressed, uh, obviously, Fabu, you've accomplished so much. I enjoyed your poetry, the four years you came to us regularly as our poet laureate. And I, I know we've missed you, uh, as a regular attendee of our meetings, sharing your, um, beautiful talent with us, uh, here as our poet laureate. But I, I know I speak for, for many of us that say that we look forward to reading your poetry regularly in periodicals, uh, look forward to your column. I, I know I enjoy reading it regularly in the Cap Times. Uh, so, when I, um, first got the news that, that you were not, um, you know, the recipient, Fabu, I, I was thinking back to when I was a kid and first meeting you. Uh, we were both young, but anyway, uh, how, how richly deserved this is, and, and I can't thank you enough for all of your contributions to our community and all the contributions you will continue to make to our community. Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. And I would like to also recognize, uh, that Katrina Sparkman, who nominated Fabu, is here. Thank you for making the nomination. We very much appreciate it. And now, Dr. Fabu Carter, please come up and accept your award.
I'd like to first thank you all for the very kind words. Thank you very much. I thank Katrina Sparkman from the Creators Cottage, who nominated me, and for the people who were on the selection committee. So this is the 2023 Jeffrey Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award. And this award is given for dedication and compassion to people and public communication, both spoken and written. And I feel it is such an important recognition of the respect we should always extend to each other, even when we disagree. I'm a poet who also writes two cultural columns, one for the Capital City Hughes and another for the Capitol Times, but I do have to give a shout out to Mojo Magazine, who was this, and my beloved Ms. Malalele Chikasa Anana. Yes, and the many years I wrote for her, and she's supported me as a writer and as a friend. So it's been very important to be able, as an African-American woman, to write my truth, to say my truth, and to tell my truth. And again, this is why this award is so very meaningful to me. I appreciate Jeff's parents. Being here to honor their remarkable son, I appreciate the mayor of Madison presenting this award, especially during the celebration of Black History Month. I appreciate my family and friends and work colleagues who came out tonight to support me in so very many ways. I want to say a final thank you in Kiswahili Asanti Sana.
Carter, and congratulations. Thank you for all of your great work in our community. All right. Next item, as Item 2, Legisstar 81962, commending and thanking Greg Michaels for his dedicated service to the Madison Public Library and to the city of Madison. Alder Madison?
Whereas Greg Michaels began his tenure as the library director at the Madison Public Library on September 2, 2012, and whereas, under Director Michaels' leadership, the Madison Public Library has received numerous awards, including the 2016 National Medal for Museum and Library Service, a Wisconsin Innovation Award, and a Top Innovator Award from the Urban Libraries Council. And whereas Director Michaels supported numerous library building improvement initiatives, including the renovation of the Central and Meadow Ridge Libraries and a relocation of the Piney Library, and...
Whereas Director Michaels has encouraged new service additions to the library, including supporting the creation of the Bubbler Program in 2013, taking ownership of the Wisconsin Book Festival in 2013, and beginning Dream Bus service in partnership with the Dane County Library Service in 2019. Whereas Director Michaels has supported community partnerships and promoted library service across the city, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council commend and thank library director Greg Michaels for his dedicated service to the Madison Public Library and the city of Madison.
Thank you, Alders. We'll take that as moved by Alder Madison and seconded by Alder Verveer, and we'll welcome Director Michaels to the podium, should you wish to say something.
It won't take me three minutes.
Make sure your library director is with us, too.
I did ask beforehand, though. Yeah, congratulations.
Take a picture. The rest is in the hallways. You're in.
This opportunity to lead Madison Public Library, I really see as a privilege that I had to be able to guide and lead this organization over the past 11-plus years. I've been going through a lot of reflection and a lot of memories, and it was really terrific when Alder Verveer approached me and said, "What about a resolution?" and different things. I was, when I was chatting with him, I was thinking about when I started. And when my position was being confirmed by the council, Alder Verveer was there, Alder Rhodes Conway was there, and Alder Rommel, right? And it's just amazing to look at where this council has come, and I think it also reflects how our libraries have really grown as well, to become more inclusive during my tenure, and to really embrace the common good for Madison. I can't thank city leadership, the mayor, all of you, for the support that you've given us. It's really meaningful, and what we've been able to do with your support was deliver a world-class library to the citizens of Madison, and I'll forever be thankful for you for doing that. As I was addressing my board a while back, it's interesting, I was so honored to follow Fabu. I got to know Fabu right when I started as well, and she was so supportive of libraries as well. And particularly being a poet, it meant a lot to have her support and her voice and support, and in particular, receiving an award in civility. And the only thing I can emphasize to you now is the challenge that a lot of public libraries are facing now, and how important it is for public libraries to be there for people. And so I really appreciate your support for that. It's really an institution, an organization, that brings such value to your communities that you serve. So thank you for all that. Thank you for this recognition, and that's it.
Congratulations. Alder Verveer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wish to take a moment to embarrass you a little, Greg. You know, I had the pleasure of attending your retirement party, as some others of us here tonight did, and the resolution that we just presented to you, and anything that we say tonight will not come anywhere close to the beautiful words spoken in the tributes articulated at that very richly deserved event, sending you off. But I do want to say that, first of all, we could have gone on with literally dozens and dozens of whereas clauses in the resolution if we had wanted to, because you need to know how beloved and missed you're going to be by certainly those of us in City Hall, but by the community. Your accomplishments are just, I think, unprecedented, and it also helps, too, that you have such a warm and inviting personality. You know, I love all of the division and department heads I've worked with over the decades, but your personality makes me a little sad. I have to admit that you ran the operation so well, I didn't get to interact with you nearly as much as many other department and division heads. You know, I can only probably count on one hand how many times we met in your office during your tenure, because you just had everything going so beautifully, so swimmingly, so innovative in all respects. In my detached observer observation, you really reinvented the definition of a library. It never, it blows my mind how much you've done for our library system compared to, for example, where we were when I started on this august body. So I want you to know, you know, how much we are going to miss you very much and appreciate your amazing work. You know, yes, it's great that Michelle Obama, you know, honored you and Rob D. at that beautiful event several years ago, and that we've, you know, literally received amazing national recognition. But those of you that have had the pleasure of working with you the most, really, really, really appreciate you. And obviously, you heard that time and time again at your beautiful party. I could go on and on with your accomplishments, but let me just close by saying, in a very parochial way, that the Central Library really is in your image and likeness. I'm there all the time, mostly for meetings, I have to admit, and I walk usually in that rear door, past the bubbler, and so every time I walk by, you know, I think of you when we think of the innovation that's housed just at Central, not to mention all of the branch libraries. Anyway, from the bottom of my heart, I can't tell you how well-deserved your retirement is, how much I hope you are able to enjoy it with your family. It means a lot that you're staying in Madison. I thought for sure, when you announced your retirement, that we'd be losing you to Colorado. I'm just so thrilled that you, this isn't goodbye, this is just congratulations on the next chapter of your life. Godspeed, my friend.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lattimer-Birth?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. I didn't have the pleasure of meeting Greg, because I was new to the council, and I've only had a couple of, you know, Zoom calls with him, but I wanted to say, the one conversation that I had with him, one-on-one, he made the case that, from his soul, that the libraries are critical to community, so they don't just serve books. He let me know that they, you know, serve initiatives, the community through initiatives, they watch over our kids, they serve the underserved, they serve the disregarded, they serve regular folks during the pandemic and any other time, human beings. So he would, I think he would agree in my short lesson with him, that it's not just about books. The library is about community, and it's a community center, and it's a center for the community. So we will advocate, and we will keep that in mind as we continue to build. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just got to say, like, it's really, really dope to now be in a space where I'm serving as Alder and on library board, because the, it's just really dope when you have someone who champions the library for all the reasons that a library should exist in our communities, like just across the country, period. Like, libraries exist to be like launching paths, they exist to be safe spaces, they exist to be spaces for where communities are centered. And for me personally, it served as the launch path for what my work today, it exists. I got to launch my first initiative at the library. I don't even think, you know, I don't know what the cost was, but it wasn't a burden because it happened, you know? And even though I didn't go forward with that idea, it served as, for the work that I am doing today. So it was literally, it served as a place where I can test my ideas for what I eventually would build out today. So I just want to say thank you for, not only for providing that kind of space for me, but I can recount tons of us across the community, including like Rob D., for example, like the Media Lab. Like, I can't tell you how many folks have used that, how many young people are using it as a podcast, you know, like, you know, to do their own, like, hip-hop video, you know what I mean? Like, so much stuff comes out of the library that folks don't really understand sometimes. So I just want to say thank you for creating, like, I grew up in libraries in Milwaukee, and it's never, even, I think I have three books that are outstanding right now, so I apologize for that, but I would not be turning those books in at time, absolutely not. So I'm sorry. But I just want to say, it's really good that it's, I've been honored and blessed to be able to work with you, to understand the logistics and the mechanics of the library system here in our area, and just thank you for creating a space that really serves, honestly, as a launch pad and a safe space, because that is very much important. So, yeah, so thank you for that. You ain't going nowhere. I'm glad, so I'm glad to hear you still in Madison, because I know how to find you easier, so.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, Greg, congratulations, and like, most people have already echoed, we know the importance of libraries, it's not just access to books, but access to technology, safe spaces, all of that. And I remember when I got elected, you guys were the first department I met with, if you recall, you and the Library Foundation folks. And I had an agenda, too, you know, because the one thing that, well, I can say for myself personally, the one thing that made such a difference in my life was, you know, I'm from Milwaukee, is they built a library in my neighborhood, a Martin Luther King Library. We didn't have, Madison's privileged to have libraries in schools, you know, learning environments in schools. We didn't have that in Milwaukee. So a library was that place that you needed to go to find those resources. So my agenda, when I met with you guys, was, okay, the dismal reports we get about the reading levels of our kids, particularly in challenged neighborhoods, and so I really wanted to know what you guys were doing, what our libraries were doing, what we're doing, to impact that. And I have to say that, man, we must have met for over an hour, and you guys answered most of my questions about some of the programs that you're doing, some of the plans to have better access so that kids can have places to learn, to read. And I did come away impressed. I'm not totally satisfied yet, okay, because the numbers, the needle has to move, and we have to find better ways of doing that. But I definitely was impressed by what our library system was doing. I was familiar with that, because I love our Goodman Library, you know, on the South Side, for real, I'm there a lot. And so just want to applaud you on what you've done, and I'm pretty sure you're going to keep, you know, pushing the library to be even better than we have right now. So I just want to thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Greg. Everyone's pretty much said all the accolades, but there's still more. I think of you as a super innovator. You stepped up Madison's game in the library department in ways that I didn't even know you could step up. I mean, not only just taking over the book fest, which I'd been part of as like an independent bookseller, which seemed like such a natural, but the bubbler was just such a brilliant idea, mate. And, you know, it probably came from a mix of all your discussions with staff, but it just was so wonderful, and I just, I can see Mike walking by with a big smile on his face many times a week. And the other thing you did downtown was the whole, like, accepting homeless services there and making space for people, and even bathroom space, which was such a contentious space for people without resources. And it seems like you did that pretty gracefully and open-heartedly. But what made me decide to hit the button is, back in the day, now we have a new library at Penny, and we're about to get Rhindall, but there was a time when us Eastside Alders were like, "We want a library, we don't have a library." And Alder Clausius was like, "I need a library, my district wants a library." And then with Alder Ball Day, it kind of came to fruition. But you heard us. But you heard us and hired a library planning person. I mean, who even knows there are such people? But you hired this person who did a really excellent plan, and focused that Rhindall would be the best spot. And I read that plan, and I'm a planning geek, I guess, and I thought, well, that settles it. The plan just explains everything. And I've, like, pretty much been a steadfast supporter of Rhindall ever since. And so now we have a beautiful library at Penny, and this new vision of a library will be at Rhindall that will serve that part of our city that really is underserved. So you have a proud legacy, and, you know, I always, always worried that someone would drag you off to some other job, or you would go on, but if it's true that you're staying here, I hope to see you around at events, and we can just appreciate you, and you can look at, see, and be proud of what you've done, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harington Kenny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Marsha just took my wind out of my sails. Creative innovator, she checked the homeless, opening up for the homeless, check. But what she did, and I served on the library board for a number of years, and what she did not say was is that Greg is instrumental in forming the first library in the Gambia. And so that is amazing, and so that's one, Marsha, you didn't know. But I, and that's who he is, because he was creative. When we would have our library board meetings, he would always come up with what-ifs, what-ifs. And so I just wanted to make sure that you knew, and that the public knew, that the first library in the Gambia will have your stamp on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Greg. Congratulations. Congratulations, Bev. And thank you for your service to our city. Now, on items one and two, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of both items one and two. And here, I would like, with, assuming no objection, to move to item three to below public comment. Seeing no objection, are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda from the body? Alder Field.
Thank you, Mayor. Disclosing that I work for UW Madison, so on item 11, that will not impact my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitterver.
Item 22, I work for the Department of Health Services, it will not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry.
I need to recuse myself from agenda item 51, legislative file number 81612. I am an employee of YWCA Madison.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler.
I'm still an employee of UW Madison.
Thank you, Alder.
Are there any other disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Alder Conklin.
Thank you. I want to be added to item number 59, legislative file number 82002.
We'll have the clerk add you. Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Are there any additional disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, then, President Curry, the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and everyone, please bear with me, it's a lengthy one. Agenda items that are super-majority items on our consent agenda, these are, will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number 15, legislative file number 81981, report of the mayor submitting resident committee appointments, 14 votes are required. Agenda item number 22, legislative file number 81368, a resolution amending the public health operating budget to accept Center for Disease Control and Prevention, strengthening U.S. public health infrastructure workforce and data systems, funding from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. 15 votes are required. Agenda item number 26, legislative file number 81593, amending a 2024 capital budget of engineering major streets and determining a public purpose and necessity, and adopting a relocation order for the acquisition and release of land interests required for the construction and maintenance of improvements for public street. 15 votes are required. Agenda item number 40, legislative file number 81964, designating the city of Madison polling locations for the 2024 spring election and presidential preference vote, 14 votes required. Agenda item number 41, legislative file number 81622, accepting funds from Dane County, authorizing the county's 2024 adopted budget to support the Dairy Drive Urban Campground, and amending the City, Community Development Division's 2024 operating budget to reflect receipt of those funds, as well as authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Dane County, and authorizing a mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Mach One Health to supplement city-administered funds previously allocated to the campground and other funding secured by Mach One Health from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. 15 votes required. Agenda item number 44, legislative file number 81948, reapproving a certified survey map of property owned by Hidden Creeks Holding located at 4205 Portage Road. 14 votes required. Agenda item number 49, legislative file number 81369, authorization to accept additional grant funds from the Wisconsin Department of Children and Families for the Family Foundation's Home Visiting Program, and create a 1.0 full-time employee public health nurse position for the program. 15 votes required. Agenda item number 51, legislative file number 81612, authorizing the city of Madison to accept a employment grant award from the Wisconsin Division of Energy, Housing, and Community Resources to be administered by the city's CDD, and authorizing the mayor to sign any requisite agreement with the state to formally accept these funds, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with YWCA of Madison, Inc., to carry out the goals of the grant, and amending CDD's 2024 operating budget as appropriate. 15 votes required. Agenda item number 55, legislative file number 81085, approving a certified survey map of property owned by Real Estate LLC located at 6110 Schrader Road and 1 through 15 Ellis Potter Court. 14 votes are required. Agenda item number 56, legislative file number 81268, approving the preliminary plat of midpoint metals on property addressed as 2150 Marty Road, 7751 Midtown Road, and 7342 through 7762 Raymond Road. 14 votes required. Agenda item 59, legislative file number 82002, changing the monthly stipend provided to members of the Police Civilian Oversight Board. 14 votes required. Following agenda items have recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item 52, legislative file number 81621, authorizing the process to select public art feature for the Imagination Center at Rhindall Park, and authority to transfer funds, in percent of art funds, from the Metro Transit Satellite Facility to the Imagination Center. The report of the Finance Committee, or the recommended action, is to return to lead with recommendation for common counsel to adopt. Agenda item number 67, legislative file number 81908, amending section of the Madison General Ordinance related to urban land, design landscaping and open space to remove minimum terrace width requirement with urban design. Let's see. Alder, Vice President Figaro Cole is requesting change of referrals to the Urban Design Commission meeting of February 28, 2024, Plan Commission of March 11, and returning to common counsel March 19 of 2024. Agenda item number 69, legislative file 81952, amending sections of the MGO to allow accessory dwelling units for properties with up to eight dwelling units and remove owner occupancy requirement for ADUs. The lead sponsor would like to add an additional referral to the Housing Strategy Committee meeting of February 22, 2024. Agenda items either excluded by, excluded by either request of Alders or speakers registered by 6:30 on February 13. Agenda item number 10, legislative file number 81295, creating a section of the Madison General Ordinance to change zoning of properties located at 2150 Marty Road, 7751 Midtown, and 7342 to 7362 Raymond Road from temporary agriculture district, and creating a section of the Madison General Ordinance to change the zoning of property located at the same addresses from, wait, from agricultural to traditional residential plan, and creating a section of the ordinance to change the zoning of property located at the same addresses from agricultural district to commercial quarter transitional district. Speakers are registered. Agenda item number 12, legislative file 81316, amending section, a section of the ordinance related to upper-level development standards of the MGO to clarify how stories are measured, measured, gosh, in urban design districts, requested for exclusion by Alder Bennett. Agenda item number 18, legislative file number 81581, change of license conditions for McTaggart's Market and Deli, and a request to change conditions to allow for sales of intoxicating liquor. The recommended action is to re-refer to the next ALRC meeting scheduled on March 20, 24. Speakers are registered for this item, but are also available to speak at the common counsel meeting following the March 20 ALRC meeting. Agenda item number 23, legislative file 81376, a resolution authorizing a non-competitive service contract of ARPA funds to president and fellows of Harvard College, and authorizing the Board of Health for Madison and Dane County on behalf of public health Madison-Dane County to sign agreement for the evaluation of the Community Alternative Care Program. Speakers are registered. Agenda item number 42, legislative file number 81625, authorizing amendments to the youth homelessness demonstration program funded contracts with urban triage and LGBT outreach on behalf of the Madison-Dane County continuum of care, authorizing amendment to HUD to extend the grant's performance period, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute a new purchase of service agreement for services performed between January 1, 2024, and February 28, 2025. Speakers are registered. Agenda item number 80, legislative file number 81906, providing Golden Vibes Counseling Center a loan to purchase a commercial property on Williamson Street through the Commercial Ownership Assistance Program under the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program using ARPA funds, using the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, local fiscal funds, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign an agreement for that purpose. Requested for exclusion for the purpose of adding an additional referral. Items introduced on the floor, legislative file number 82064, authorizing the use of up to 424,000 of emergency rental funds toward Lutheran Social Services to support rental assistance and support residents for live, support services for residents living at Tree Lane and Reskee Properties, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Lutheran Social Services, sponsored by Alder Conklin, to be introduced, or to be before the Finance Committee of February 26, and return to common counsel on March 5.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional exclusions at this time? Seeing none, let me go through that quickly once more. The following items are 14 vote items, 15, 40, 44, 55, 56, and 59. The following items are 15 vote items, 22, 26, 41, 49, and 51. There's several recommendations that are different from what is printed in your agenda. On item 18, the recommendation is refer to the ALRC meeting of March 20. On item 52, the recommendation is to adopt. On item 67, the recommendation is to refer to the Urban Design Commission of 228, the Plan Commission of 311, and the Common Counsel on 319. On item 69, the recommendation is to add an additional referral to the Housing Strategy Committee on February 22. Following items will be excluded from the consent agenda, item 10, 12, 23, 42, and 80. Please note that the registrants on 18 have withdrawn their registrations, their speaking registrations for the evening. So again, the items that will be excluded from the consent agenda are items 10, 12, 23, 42, and 80. And we have one introduction from the floor at this time. Alder Wihilehi.
For item 80, do we need to, I just added a referral to the Economic Development, so we don't need to discuss.
You have the date for that?
Next Wednesday, the 21.
So on item 80, is there any objection to simply adding the referral to the Economic Development Commission of February 21? Alder Rummel, Alder Revere, you've rung in, no objection? No objection. All right, seeing no objection, that item will be referred. Alder Rummel.
I think there is a registrant that would still like to speak on item 18, who's in the room and made faces when you said no, and the registrants had withdrawn, at least one has remained.
Alder, I only have two registrants wishing to speak on that item. And my understanding is that... Oh, okay. Then we will exclude item 18 as well. Alder Revere?
Yes.
Thank you, Alder. All right, so one more time then, items that are excluded are items 10, 12, 18, 23, and Are there any other exclusions or notes on the consent agenda? Seeing none, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt consent agenda.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And we'll move on to public comment. All right, so our first item for public comment is item 10, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change zoning at 2150 Marty Road, 7751 Midtown Road, and 7342 to 7362 Raymond Road. Our first registrant wishing to speak is Aaron Kruger of District 20, to be followed, excuse me, to be followed by Brian Munson. Do we have Aaron?
Yes, oh, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Certainly. So I just wanted to raise some concerns regarding the zoning of this land. It sits between two well-known ecosystems, Elver Park, as well as the Ice Age Trail, and I do believe that a development of community and a lot of housing projects put there would cause a big disruption in the ecosystem to the natural wildlife in the area on the West Madison side. With that being said, I believe that was also noted in the meeting on February 5. As a secondary comment, there is a new elementary school that was recently put up. As a secondary comment, there is a new elementary school that was recently put up in the southbound direction of High Point Road. With the beginning of putting a lot of housing communities into this area, it would cause a lot of increased traffic flow, and the street headed down from High Point Road intersecting Midtown Road, if you're heading southbound, is a pretty severe gradient at about 40 degrees on a downhill slope, and there are multiple cars that slide through that intersection throughout the year. I do believe that having a number of housing properties put in would cause a need for a traffic light and may cause a lot of traffic congestion, given those certain road conditions in that area. With all that due respect, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brian Munson of District 13, representing Veridian Homes. Brian?
Good evening, Council. Again, Brian Munson with Vandewell and Associates. Glad to be here tonight to talk about a project that has been a long sought-after opportunity for a lot of great pieces of the city. Parts of this plan and this neighborhood have sought street connections that'll be facilitated through this project that have been in plan since the mid-'80s. This project will facilitate a 40-acre addition to Elver Park as well as regional stormwater management to address some significant flooding issues in the past, at the same time as implementing the goals of the adopted plans to create diverse housing options, neighborhood mixed use, and almost 607 units of housing, much-needed housing for the community. So we're very excited to be here. We appreciate the partnership and discussions with the city that have got us to this point. This project's going to take some time to implement. There's a lot of moving parts to be achieved here, but overall, we think that it'll be a great addition to the community, a great addition to the southwest side of Madison, and a really sustainable use of the property to create diverse, dense, affordable housing as well as a range of living environments. So with me tonight, Matt Brink from Veridian Homes, as well as Dan Day from Denofia Okaki, available to answer any questions you might have. But again, we're just really excited to be here. We think it's a great project and implements the adopted plan to the city in very meaningful ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the registrants wishing to speak on this item. Are there any questions for either of the registrants? Alder Rumel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Brian Munson. I'm sure you probably are aware that the council got an email from Nathan Wattier, and maybe, I know you can't speak for him, but I'm wondering if you could talk to the issue that he raised in his email, which was about comment number 81 and the conditions for the preliminary plat?
I would be happy to. In fact, I did have a chance to talk with Nathan here this evening prior to the council meeting, and we believe that the addition is a positive addition that they recommend. We're comfortable with it as worded, but also with that addition. We've been talking with staff about that access point and the design. I think comment 81 is intended to identify that we need to work to place that in concert with the traffic engineering recommendations to make sure that access is provided for the parcel to the north, and that's something that we will work through on the final plating. I would note that this is going to be implemented in a lot of different steps, so this little section of Midtown may actually be one of the last sections that gets replatted, simply because we have to connect High Point to the south and Raymond to the east and a lot of other moving parts before that intersection gets reconstructed and this alignment gets vacated. So in the interim, we're very dedicated to work with staff and resolve that issue alongside with the property to the north.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions for the registrants? Seeing none, thank you to our registrants on this item. Our next item is item 18, the change of license conditions at McTaggart's Incorporated. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Michael Donnelly of District 6.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I wanted to actually talk to you rather than having this on the consent agenda so that we didn't send it back to ALRC and then have the same thing happen over again. We regularly on ALRC have to make the determination whether and how much we're going to trust a licensee. Someone has a bar or restaurant that's in a residential area, they want to have it be open late, there are neighbors who are concerned about noise, and we use the information at our disposal to make the determination of how comfortable we are, how late they can stay open, what sort of conditions we'll make. And I think that's entirely appropriate. What we did at our most recent meeting, in my opinion, is not appropriate. We said that we trusted an applicant that when they said that they weren't going to sell hard liquor, and because we trusted them, we gave them a license to sell hard liquor. We eliminated a condition rather than replacing it with another one. I think that that is not a safe precedent to set, and in the specific case where they were coming to us so that they could sell a new product category, there are other applicants who are going to want the same thing soon, and we need to treat them equitably. So I urge you not just to re-refer this, but also to give guidance to ALRC telling us that we should find appropriate conditions for this product category that can be applied uniformly to everyone who wants to sell it. And I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you. Alder Bennett, question?
I believe that on this topic, Rick was looking to speak. He's still, like, he was just in this room.
He withdrew his registration.
I see. Okay. Sorry, just give me a moment. No questions at this time.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin, a question?
Yes, thank you. Can you explain a little bit more of what exactly you're talking about when they say allow for selling of intoxicating liquors?
Of course. So there are, in the kinds of licenses that exist, there are only some really big buckets. So we can give a license to sell beer and a license to sell wine and all other liquor. So if someone wants to sell, for example, wine and cider, what we can do is give them a license to sell liquor and then put a condition on it saying it can only be used for wine and cider. So that's where we were before the last ALRC meeting with this applicant. They, you know, there was hard seltzers? So hard seltzers up until now were malt-based, so technically they count as beer. There's a new category of them that are spirits-based, and so given the way the conditions were written on this license, this applicant isn't allowed to sell that product. They came to us saying, this is basically the same thing as what we're selling now. It's the same alcohol by volume, it's the same types of containers, it's just different chemistry. And they wanted to sell it, which in my opinion is fine. Nothing bad about that. The problem is how ALRC addressed it. Instead of saying, you're allowed to do this specific thing, we eliminated the condition against hard liquor entirely. Did I answer your question?
It did. It did, because you're telling me that there's a different type of liquor now that is kind of above a beer category but not quite as a hard liquor category, so you're trying to find a place where this new alcohol is going to be categorized or...
Well, it's absolutely categorized. Oh, I'm sorry, terribly sorry. It absolutely is categorized as liquor according to the state guidelines. So what we are looking to do is figure out a way to allow this category within what's counted as liquor, so that an establishment like this could sell wine and cider and spirits-based hard seltzers.
And is that all one liquor license then?
Correct.
That's one liquor license, okay. So you just want us to help guide the ALRC further down the road. When this is going to become more popular, we want to make sure it's equitable across the board for everyone to obtain this license.
Exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, questions?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to understand better about where your concern lies, and maybe I missed it because of the mic issue. Is it simply in the issue of precedent that it sets, or is there an issue with the actual alcohol that is being sold?
I don't have any concern with this type of alcohol, this spirits-based hard seltzer. My concern is that the change that we made, or the change that ALRC recommended for this license was to eliminate the restriction entirely, which would mean that they could sell any kind of booze they wanted. And that what I think we should do instead is craft a new condition that allows them to sell this without opening the doors wide to sell absolutely anything.
I see. And so, I don't know if this is a question for you or for staff. Is there any way that we can make that recommendation that you're having now instead of sending them back to ALRC?
If you feel like crafting the conditions here, yes. If you'd like my help, I'd be happy to help.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Alder Figaro, call questions?
I am...
No questions?
Well, I am trying to follow the whole thing here. So the question is not about policy regarding the alcohol types and that distinction between the two, the new product and existing product. It's specifically about lifting a condition that the ARC voted in favor, or is that what we're...
Yes. It's that I think we should make a condition that allows this product without allowing everything.
Okay, so was that a discussion that happened at the ARC committee to change the policy, to make that across the board?
So the discussion at ALRC, and of course, take this with a grain of salt, this is my memory of something from a few weeks ago. The committee appeared to be in agreement that it was fine for this establishment and probably many others to sell spirits-based hard seltzer. And there was a discussion of how to rewrite the conditions. Then one member of the committee moved that we simply strike the condition about hard liquor entirely, and during deliberation on that motion, I believe two different committee members said, well, we don't want them to sell hard liquor, but they said they won't, and we trust them. Yes, and I think that saying, we don't want somebody to do this, but we're going to give them a license saying they can do that because we trust them not to use it, is not a good idea.
Okay, I mean, I don't disagree with that, but the fact that you're here means that we don't have precedence on this, so I guess we're trying to avoid that from happening. And it sounds almost like there should be a policy coming from the ARC to us with a suggestion on what to, you know, like, you guys are the experts on these laws, not us, right? And I know that I visit you a lot, so I should be an expert on this, but I do acknowledge that. But I feel like you guys should be telling us what the statutes are in accordance to the ordinances, instead of us trying to give you feedback on how to manage this one. You know what I mean?
I do. Maybe I should be more, I'm just asking you to tell us, do a better job at this. Make conditions that say what you want rather than striking them entirely. We can handle the details of it, but we didn't.
Okay. So pretty much you're asking us to tell the committee to revisit this with a better conditions?
Exactly.
That's all you're asking. You're not asking to change processes, even though you should probably, there should be some kind of policy change at some point that should be born at the committee level to come to us.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel.
Mayor, maybe I'm being repetitive after the last speaker, but it sounds like, I know there's a license to sell X. Do we need a new kind of license category? And maybe I should ask the city attorney.
It's the state. The mayor's shaking her head, no.
As the mayor said, it's at the state level.
The license type is set at the state level. That's not something we can control.
We have no authority. It's just on the fine-grained level of how you treat different products rather than a general category.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Alder. I have no others in the queue with questions, so thank you, Michael, and thank you for your service.
Of course.
All right, then, our next, we have no further items on 18. Our next item is item 23, which is authorizing a non-competitive service contract to allocate ARPA funds to Harvard, the Tobin Center, to conduct an evaluation of the CARES program. On item 23, we have one registrant wishing to speak, Bonnie Rowe of District 11. Bonnie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Common Council. I wanted to call in with some degree of opposition to this Agenda Item 23, a resolution authorizing a non-competitive contract of $150,000 for the evaluation of the CARES program. I don't oppose this because I'm opposed to CARES. On the contrary, it's been a big success, and I don't know anyone who doesn't agree with that. It has tripled in size, gone citywide, and all this in just over two years of being in service, and they're taking more and more calls. It's already nicely placed under the reputable Madison Fire Department and has built-in accountability and oversight. There's a lot of data, and it's 22 annual report, and I imagine they'll be releasing a 2023 report soon. So we're going to hear soon, I guess, about the budget overview for 2025, and we already know that it's bleak, and we knew it was coming, and this is the last year of ARPA funds. So I just would love to hear some discussion on why evaluate CARES with this $150,000. It's a significant amount of money, like what a Metro Transit chief makes in a whole year of work or two veteran police officers. Why not, if we're going to evaluate something, spend it on evaluating things that don't seem to have as much oversight, like Public Health's Violence Prevention Unit? If you pay attention, you can find out some of the ideas that were going to be tried and some money thrown here and there, but as for effectiveness, I haven't seen the numbers or the accountability. Or even Mach 1, it looks like you're about to extend another $400,000 into homeless services through Mach 1, and I'd be interested in seeing an evaluation of how that body is doing. Are there ways to make the city's homeless services more effective? That is also really important work. So in closing, I hope to hear about why CARES, and unless the fire chief feels that he cannot accurately assess the effectiveness of CARES, I oppose the item and hope if it moves forward, at least there could be a competitive bidding process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none. Next item is item 42, which is authorizing amendments to the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project funded contracts with Urban Triage LGBTQ Outreach, Inc. on behalf of the Continuum of Care. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Sky Gia Garcia of District 12. Do we have Sky?
Mayor, there's no person in attendance by that name.
It does not look like we have Sky in the room either, so we'll move on. I believe that is all of the items in which we have registrants wishing to speak. So then we will move to item 3, unless there's a desire to take a quick break before item 3. Not seeing any of that. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
We take a quick break?
Five minutes?
Five minutes, sounds great.
Alder Martinez-Rutherford moves five minutes. Is there a second? Moved and seconded to take a five-minute recess. Let's come back at 5 after the hour. Let's come back at 5:00 after the hour. We're about one minute out, folks. One minute out. All right, if I can have the alder on the Zoom come back with a camera on and the alders in the room, take their seats, please. And, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. And if the clerk would please call the roll. Alder Bahalia. Bennett? Conklin?
President.
Curry?
Here.
Duncan? Evers is excused. Field?
Here.
Figaro Cole?
Here.
Govender Rajan? Uh, Uguer?
Here.
Harrington McKinney? Vladimir Burris?
Here.
Madison?
Here.
Martinez-Rutherford?
Here.
President.
Rommel's president. Tischler? Vervier?
Vervier.
Sorry, here.
Bitiver? Madam Mayor, we have form. Thank you. All right. Item 3 is Legisler 81870, the 2025 Budget Outlook. And I will hand it over to Director Schmidke.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As you know, we have been providing some information to you over the last few weeks about the outlook for the 2025 budget. And we're here this evening to kind of walk through those sort of four parts in a more condensed fashion and have an opportunity for questions from you as we try to engage on this issue of, how do we understand the budget for 2025 and beyond? And what steps do we need to take ultimately to get to a balanced budget that the Council will have to adopt in November? So Christine Coe and I will be walking through some slides. And Christine's going to kick it off, and then I will wrap it up. So Christine?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Christine Coe, Budget Manager in the Finance Department. So our agenda today is, the purpose of the presentation is to make sure that we all have a common understanding of what is in the budget, how we're defining the structural deficit, some limitations facing our options for the upcoming year, and present revenue and expenditure strategies. As Dave mentioned, this is building off of a four-part series that we've sent out over the past few weeks. It's the CliffsNotes version, so we're going to go through each of these sections really quickly to go through some budget basics, defining the structural deficit, and focusing on expenditure and revenue options. We'll talk about next steps and the calendar for 2025 budget development, and then leave time for Q and A. We put up a budget website last week. If you go to the Finance Department, the Budget tab, and if you click into 2025, you'll see all of the materials that we've presented so far, which includes a copy of the presentation, the recordings that Dave has been doing that gives a voiceover, and then the summary emails. And we'll also be updating this regularly, including with a copy of tonight's presentation. So the structure of our series was to, again, start with the foundations, talk about the structural deficit, and then options on the revenue and expenditure side. And each of these sections, we have a series of takeaways. So the takeaways are really, if you only remember three things about each of the sections, this is what we want you to remember. For Budget Foundations, we'll talk about why we focus so much on the General Fund and how it's based primarily in, how it's primarily supported by property taxes, and look more generally at the 2024 operating budget, the revenue sources, talk a little bit about why it's, we're reliant on the property tax, and look at our expenditure categories, which are dominated by personnel and debt service in terms of how we spend our money. So to get started, one of the building blocks of the city budget is our fund structure. And I think many of you in the room know that the city's budget is made out of many funds. And for our purposes, a fund is a pot of money that's designated for a specific purpose. When we talk about funds, the General Fund is the city's primary operating fund that pays for our day-to-day operations, and it's primarily supported by property tax revenues. The Library Fund is smaller, but it's also primarily supported by property tax. So we often group these together when we talk about the operating budget. And we'll collectively refer to both the General and Library Fund throughout the presentation as the General Fund for simplicity. Some of the other funds in the city budget include debt service, capital projects, enterprise funds for some of the business-like activities of the city, which include Metro, Manona Terrace, and utilities like sewer, stormwater, and water, and many others that we couldn't list here, like the Grant Fund, for example. One of the key differences between the General Fund and all other funds is that other funds have other sources of revenues. For example, in enterprise funds, these are primarily supported by user fees and charges that pay for the direct or indirect costs of providing services. And we can't generate a profit from these business-like activities. We just cover the cost of the service. And we wanted to make sure that this, we had this right up front because we sometimes get questions and ideas from folks about, you know, can we raise a fee or a rate in this fund to pay for an activity in the operating fund? And the funds have, like inter-fund activity is highly regulated, and transfers across funds are complicated, and we generally have to stay within a fund when we're talking about the budget. So we really focus on the General Fund, again, because it's funded by the property tax and it's our primary operating budget. So taking a closer look at the 2024 adopted budget that you all passed last November, this is a breakdown of the budget by revenue source. And again, we are heavily reliant on property tax. A little over 70% of the budget is funded through property taxes. This is partly a function of the structure of state government and how the state funds municipalities through shared revenue, which Dave will talk a little bit more about in Section 4. But that is the largest share. The next share is local revenues, which include various transfers, payment in lieu of taxes, which are sometimes referred to as pilot payments, fees, forfeitures, licenses. This is 16% of our budget. And then the next share is state aid, which includes shared revenue from the state, which accounts for 11% of the budget. And the 2024 budget also included about a little over $9 million in fund balance applied, which is 2% of the budget. If you go back through some, through past years, you'll sometimes see fund balance, sometimes not, but you'll always see property tax as the biggest piece of the pie, followed by local revenues and state aid. On the other side of the equation, we have our expenditures. So there are a few different ways of looking at expenditures. Here we have expenditures by expense type. So the largest piece of what we spend money on is our personnel. So personnel accounts for about 63% of our budget. This includes staff salaries and benefits. The next largest share of our budget is debt service, which is about 16% of our budget. And then the remaining 20% is a combination of non-personnel expenses, which are supplies and purchased services. Other includes interdepartmental billings and charges and some other miscellaneous expenses. And then another view of our budget is looking at what are the functions we're paying for. So this chart breaks out all of our agency budgets and groups them by what we call functional areas, which are groupings of agencies that perform similar types of work. So you can see that public health, public safety and public health account for the largest share of the budget at about 43% of the total. This is primarily the Police and Fire Department budget, but it also includes the city's share of public health, Madison-Dane County, as well as a very small budget for the Office of Independent Monitor. Again, in this chart, we see that debt service is the second-largest category, followed by Public Works and Administration as 3 and 4. And the final perspective on our expenditures is to look at how we spend money in context with other municipalities. So this table shows per capita expenditures by different categories and how we rank compared to the average to these 35 municipalities and a comparison of our spending to the average and median expenditures. Madison ranks first in spending in Health and Human Services programs, second in Transit, and seventh in Culture and Education spending per capita. And these are well above statewide averages. Some of these are, this is partly a reflection of priorities and things that we have chosen to fund in our budget, and partly a reflection of the unique position of Madison and how we provide some services that in other parts of the state are primarily funded by the county. So it's both a reflection of priorities as well as some of just the unique structures of Madison relative to other places in the state. In other areas, such as law enforcement, fire, and emergency services, waste collection, and general government, we're actually really close to average. So if you look at this last column, percent of average, if we were exactly average, we'd be at 100%. So the places where you see, you know, 104%, 98%, we're very close to the average city in Wisconsin. So again, to reiterate the takeaways from this section, the General Fund is the focus of the budget because property taxes are the main revenue source. We are heavily reliant on property taxes, and that's due for many reasons that we'll get into later, and partly because of state laws and limitations on local revenues. And personnel and debt service are our largest expenditure categories. So in the next section, we'll focus on the components of the structural deficit. We'll have a definition of what we mean by the structural deficit and talk about how revenues have not fully recovered from the pandemic, and talk about some of the reasons why the growth in expenses outpaces our growth in revenues, and what exactly we are building into our assumptions and our models. So we've presented a version of the slide to the Council and Finance Committee for the past three years that I've been with the city. Essentially, what we mean by a structural deficit is that our projected expenses are consistently greater than our projected revenues despite external economic conditions. So the cost to continue, the cost to maintain what we already do is more than what we think we'll bring in through taxes and other revenues. And in the graph on the right, that's represented by the area of the red segment of the chart. The gap in 2025 is projected to be $27 million. And if we don't do anything, that gap will grow to $60 million in 2029. The city has had some amount of a budget gap in each of the budgets for over 10 years. And we've closed the gap through a variety of methods. and we've closed the gap through a variety of methods. The full information session slides has a timeline of a 10, 10-year period of different budget balancing measures that include implementing special charges, implementing the wheel tax, making adjustments to fee and license schedules, applying fund balance and surpluses from TID closures. And since 2021, we've relied heavily on federal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. In 2024 specifically, there were some adjustments that were, provide ongoing savings and some, some one-time adjustments. So in the ongoing category, we implemented a 1% across-the-board reduction to all general fund agencies. And this was based on an analysis of underspending that showed agencies across the board have historically been underspending their target budget, so we thought we can implement this without having major service implications. We also implemented a higher salary savings rate, again, based on an analysis of vacancy rates and what agencies were actually spending on, on personnel. These two expenditure reductions were in addition to a very modest increase in revenues from room tax that support the zoo in Olbert Gardens. In the one-time category, we have, this was the primary way that we closed the 2024 budget, we used the remaining American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds for state and local fiscal recovery. We've been applying portions of the city allocation since 2021, and 2024 is the last year to expend this in our operating budget. We applied the city's share of surpluses in closed TID districts, and we applied fund balance from what we also refer to as our rainy day fund, which accounts for a little over $9 million. So as I said, we've had a structural deficit for, for a while now, and we found different ways to close it. So some of you may be wondering what's causing the structural deficit or why it's so persistent. There are a few reasons that we wanted to illustrate here. The first is the lasting impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on the city. This graph shows a comparison of the city's actual and projected revenues, which is the lighter color line that's below, that's, that's lower. And then the darker color line is a calculation of, an estimate of what our revenues would have been if not for the pandemic. So this is an estimate based on a U.S. Treasury calculation that shows, if not for the pandemic, we estimate our 24 revenues would be $33 million or 9% more than what they are today. And this is primarily due to the types of revenue sources that we have access to in the city, and the fact that they're not as dynamic to some of the economic recovery and actions that have happened since the pandemic. So when we calculate the budget deficit, we're really looking, again, at the difference between our growth in revenues and our growth in expenditures. So we say, you know, we're starting, the 2024 budget is balanced, where do we think 2025 revenues are going to go, and where do we think 2025 expenses are going to go? So on the revenue side of the equation, we think we'll see a modest increase in revenue of about $13 million or a 3% growth. This is primarily from an increase in the allowable levy, a very small increase in state aid and other revenues. In contrast, we think that our expenditures will grow by about $40 million. $18 million, again, is replacing the one-time funds that we applied to close the gap in 2024. And then the remaining $22 million is split by, by increased personnel costs, increased debt service, and other costs. In terms of how we come up with these estimates, there are a few assumptions that we make. We are assuming a 3% cost of living adjustment for all employees. That keeps us up to date with bargain increases for protective service and also maintains wage parity for general municipal employees. We also assume that we're fully funding the initiatives that start partway in 2024. We always budget for an increase in health insurance rates, because those go up year after year. We assume 20 new positions to keep up with population growth and service needs. This employee growth is an average of past years, and it's not really reflecting new initiatives, but just a, kind of a maintenance of levels of service. And we always have a small increase to those non-personnel costs to keep up with inflation. So when we take the difference between a $40 million increase in expenses and a $13 million increase in revenues, that difference is a $27 million gap that we'll reference throughout the presentation. And one additional factor to consider when we think about different revenue and expenditure strategies is a recently enacted state law that's called Public Safety Maintenance of Effort, that's, we often abbreviate as MOE. So this requirement states that police and fire have to maintain certain levels of service and meet, meet a certain number of criteria as listed below. So on police, we have to demonstrate that we're spending the same amount on employment costs for law enforcement officers, that the police budget is the same percentage of the budget, or the number of FTE law enforcement officers is consistent. We have to meet one of those three criteria. And for fire and EMS, we have to meet at least two of the criteria that are listed on this slide, which include spending for protective service, the number of full-time firefighters, level of training and response times. So we have to show that we're at least maintaining these levels year over year, which puts pressures on where we can cut or make adjustments to our operating budget. If we fail to comply, there would be a penalty in, as a reduction of shared revenue. So again, to summarize this section before I hand it back to Dave, is our revenues haven't fully recovered from the pandemic. There's, the growth in our expenses outpaces the growth in our revenues. This is due to constraints in our revenues and also accounting for cost of living increases and other assumptions that we built into our expense models. And changing our cost-to-continue estimates are further complicated by the state laws for maintenance of effort for police and fire. And then I'm going to hand it back to Dave.
Thanks, Christine. So Christine kind of walked through our current budget, our fund structure, our revenues and expenditures, and then talked about where we're at in terms of our projections of allowable growth in revenue compared to what we think is going to cost to maintain current services. So the next two parts walk through, well, what are some of the options if we talk about closing the $27 million gap through expenditures, and then also looking at revenue options? So on the expenditure side, clearly, as we've talked about, and as, as you as a body went through in November, you have to pass a balanced budget. That is the law of Wisconsin, as well as in its constitution. When we talk about debt service as a part of our budget and as an expenditure, reducing debt service for, obviously, obviously has a positive effect in terms of the overall tax levy that's paid by property owners, but it does not, under levy limits, provide additional funds for the operating budget. The levy limit is constructed in such a way that debt service is separate. And then finally, when we look at expenditures, there's a diff, a number of different lenses to look at that, whether it's through across-the-board reductions, reductions to personnel costs, and so on. So those ways to balance the budget. On the revenue side, we have things that we call special charges, and we'll get into what those are. We can increase our current local revenues, and we'll talk about some of those options. And then the state law allows a certain amount of increase in the property tax, and that has been included in the calculation of identifying the $27 million gap. In order to go above that maximum amount, the option is to go to the voters through a referendum. On the expenditure side, obviously, there's many different ways to look at reductions in expenditures. Some of those include an across-the-board reduction on a percentage basis. Others would be to look in sort of a last-in, first-out, those sort of new programs that have been added over the last few years to roll those back, that's another option. Looking at sort of specific positions or services to reduce. And then finally, as Christine walked through in terms of where the money is spent in the budget, most of it is on personnel, and an option would be to reduce compensation for staff. So again, talking about debt service, we often get questions about that. First and foremost, we cannot reduce debt service. That is for debt that's already been incurred. We have basically a legal covenant with those who have invested in the city's debt, and we have to repay that. We have both serious financial and reputational consequences of not paying that debt back. When we turn to the levy limit calculation, as I mentioned, debt service is a separate part of the levy limit calculation. We reduce debt service, that simply means we reduce the allowable increase in the levy. There is no additional capacity created in the operating budget by reducing the amount of debt. It does help in terms of the overall levy, but does not create more capacity for the operating budget. When we look at the new spending that's been added to the budget since 2021, it's a total of about $25 million, but most of it has really been for cost of living adjustments for staff. And so that's to address collective bargaining agreements, catch-up pay in terms of wage increase equity issues between general municipal employees and commission staff of the police and fire departments, and issues surrounding that in terms of benefit cost increases and so on. There's about $5 million that's been spent on new positions, and another $2.2 million on new initiatives. I won't go into all those details, but new positions have been added for, just as the city expands in population and trying to meet those needs, as well as a variety of services to address issues in the community, like the CARES program, for example. And then also the added costs associated with attaching the geography, geographic area, and the population of the former town of Madison to the city. Putting $27 million in context solely from what we spend in the budget, what, what does that look like? One way to look at it is, when we look at that group of agencies, $27 million is equal to the entire Streets Division budget. It's equal to all of the divisions in planning, community, and economic development. So all of community development, all of economic development, building inspection, planning, and so on. If we turn to, as a percentage of the budget, what does $27 million mean? So obviously, as I mentioned, we cannot cut debt service, so if you take that out and leave the rest of the general fund budget, that's an 8% across-the-board cut. If we exclude the police and fire departments from any cuts, that percentage increases to 15% to the rest of the agencies. If we turn to just positions and salaries, $27 million is roughly 270 positions. That is a major part of the city's staffing complement. And if that, that's about 10% of all positions, it's about 20% if police and fire positions are excluded. And then if, you know, another lens to look through this is to get to $27 million, you can cut everybody's pay by 9%. And includes the police and fire department staff. You take those out, that increases by threefold. So it's a, $27 million is a major element of the budget. So takeaways, the budget has to be balanced each year. So the mayor will have to introduce a balanced executive budget, and ultimately, the council has to adopt a balanced budget, meaning revenues equal expenditures. Reducing debt service, while it has the benefit of, obviously, the property tax effect of what property owners pay under the levy limits, it does not create more levy room for the operating budget. And then finally, when we look at what expenditures mean, there's a number of different ways to look at reducing expenditures, whether it be across the board, programs that have been added, positions, compensation, and so on. So that's the expenditure options. Turning to revenues, some takeaway there is we had a significant increase in state aid for all communities around the state in the most recent state budget. But Madison was short-changed in that process, and that does contribute somewhat to the deficit we see today. We have a limited number of non-property tax revenue options. As you saw early in the presentation, 70% of our budget comes from the property tax. There aren't any other major general revenue options available to the city, and that's really a, a result of the way the state law works in terms of how local governments can finance their services. And then there are trade-offs when we look at the various revenue options from an equity perspective and so on, for what, what those options might be. So putting our revenues in context, again, that comparison with the largest cities in the state, when we look at it on that per capita basis and percentage of the statewide average, federal aid, we rank number two in the state. Again, it's not surprising, this does reflect all of the pandemic aid that the city received, the level of services it provides for which it receives federal aid, such as having a transit system, having a pretty robust housing authority through, through which we receive funds. We rank very high on property taxes. So when we say it's 70% of the budget, we rank, that reflects, you know, Madison's sort of relative, what we call property wealth. It has property value per resident that is above average. And so the way the, the state interactions on state aid flow back to the city creates that, that reliance on property taxes. We rank high on fines and forfeitures, but that's a small amount per capita. You can see the total taxes, we rank sixth. Total, or all other state aids excluding shared revenue, we rank pretty high. Again, some of that reflects some of the services that Madison provides and so on. Where we're closer to the average is on things like charges for services. So that's like our ambulance fees, for example. And licenses and permits, we're actually a little bit below average. Our total state aid, we rank 23rd. So we are 30% below average. Shared revenue, we're 50%. We have limited options that are not related to the property tax. So when we say 30% of the budget is non-property tax, and 11% of the budget comes from the state, we have very few options to try to close a gap with these options. So we have what are called charges for service. There's an activity that the city provides. In receipt of that service, you as a user pay for it. So the largest example of that are our ambulance fees, for example. Our licenses and permits, like a building permit, that's the largest share of that category. Fines and forfeitures, the largest share there is parking violations, which are deposited in the general fund. We have room taxes, but again, as an option, we can only keep 30% of the room tax for general fund activities. The other 70% under state law has to go to pay for tourism-related activities. We have no options on that under state law, in terms of that split. We can increase the room tax. So when we look at total local revenues of $55 million, those would have to be increased by 50% in order to generate $27 million. And even the ability to increase those revenues by that amount is limited by the fact that we can't charge more than the cost of the service. we can't charge more than the cost of the service. And so that's what we always have to keep in mind as well. We've talked a little bit about what are called special charges. This is probably the broadest option that is available to the mayor and council in terms of raising revenues. And it's basically a way to pay for the cost of a specific service that can be identified as having a broad-based benefit. There are certain types of fees or charges for certain activities that, under state law, do not result in a net increase in revenue to the city. This is a state law requirement under levy limits, and you can see listed there, things like snow removal, garbage collection. If we have been using the levy to pay for that service, if we instead substitute a fee, we lose the levy capacity. And so we get no net increase from that. But we do have other options. We have put in place an urban forestry special charge. That raises revenue each year to pay for forestry services in the city. And we do have a resource recovery special charge. Other options include transportation, possibly the library. So instead of the general fund and the levy paying for that, instead put a special charge in place. And parks is another possible option. In each of those cases, a broad-based public benefit would have to be identified, a study conducted, and then some form of a methodology devised to distribute those costs to property owners' parcels in the city. So a dollar per month per residence, it should read residence, raises about $1 million. So therefore, it'd need to be about $324 per year per residence to generate $27 million. That would be about a one-third increase in the municipal services bill, the current amount that's paid. So that's the water, sewer, stormwater, current special charges are all on that monthly bill that comes out to those receiving those services. And so that would be an increase of about a third in that bill. Okay, turning to property taxes, we have the limit under state law, and that's been reflected in the calculation of the $27 million gap. To go above that requires voter approval through a referendum. In even-numbered years, so we're in an even-numbered year right now, that referendum can be held at the spring and fall primary elections and at the November general election. The referendum process under state law allows either a one-time increase, so it would be a one increase for a year and then it would go away, or a permanent increase. That increase is limited to a fixed dollar amount. It is not a percentage of the levy that continues year after year after year. And so, as you can imagine, as the budget continues to grow in costs in future years, the impact of that increase from a referendum diminishes as a share of the budget. So it solves the gap in the short term, but it doesn't in the long term. And so that's another factor to keep in mind. To raise $27 million from the property tax is about $284 on the average value home. That means a 9% increase in that city portion of the tax bill and a little under a 4% increase, all other things being equal on that total property tax bill, all of the taxing jurisdictions, school district, city, county, and technical college. There are some trade-offs when we talk about property taxes versus fees or charges. First of all, who pays? So when we have property taxes, again, under state law, we have properties that can be taxed, and there are properties that cannot be taxed. So certain nonprofit organizations that own property, they are not assessed a property tax. State-owned buildings are not assessed a property tax. Government-owned buildings. In contrast, user fees, so a special charge, that is assessed against all property in the city. So it is a way to sort of distribute some of that revenue effect across a broader base of parcels. From an equity perspective, under state law, the state constitution, there is no way to provide differential relief on the property tax bill. And what I mean by that is it cannot be a targeted tax credit on the bill, for example, based on income or based on other sorts of demographic categories or whatever it may be. It has to be equally applied. So there are credits on the tax bill. If you're familiar with that, you may see something called a school levy tax credit that applies to all properties. Or the lottery credit applies to most properties. In contrast, on the user fee side, those, that's the relief. It's, we do have the MADCAP program, and so there are ways that we can provide some differential relief for user fees. Going back to how the taxes are calculated, the property tax is a flat percentage, meaning that a higher-value property and presumably a higher-income owner of that property is paying a larger dollar amount because it's a percentage of that value as opposed to a lower-value property. From the user fee or charge side, it's a flat dollar amount, meaning higher-income individuals will pay a lower percentage of their income for that fee as opposed to lower-income individuals. So there's another consideration from an equity perspective. So the takeaways on the property tax is we have a limited number of options when we talk about non-property tax revenues that the city has. And then when we look at whether to investigate a property tax increase, which would have to be through a referendum, versus user fees and charges, there are trade-offs. On the user fee side, there's some ways to address equity. On the property tax side, it's a percentage, but we can't have targeted relief approaches. And so those are things to keep in mind as we kind of go through options to address the $27 million gap. So turning to next steps, clearly, there's a number of possible paths forward, and those can be mixtures of expenditure reductions, service reductions, for example, combined with revenue options. And so that'll be sort of a balancing that you as a body and the mayor will have to kind of sort through, and we'll assist you with that throughout the process. And so we have the special charges, we could increase existing local revenues, or go to the voters to increase the property tax. On the expenditure side, a variety of different ways, whether it be across the board, reductions in specific services, excluding certain programs from reductions, and so on. So next steps, we'll be back in front of you at your next meeting, so get used to us, I guess. And at that point, we'll really kind of walk through each of the concepts we're talking about this evening, talk about values, priorities, and possible paths forward. We may also talk about initial legislation to kind of signal paths forward as we develop the budget over the next few months. And then, as I said, we're prepared and ready to help you work through these issues, look at scenarios, and so on. The budget timeline, I'm going to turn that back over to Christine. She'll kind of walk through what we're looking at in terms of the capital budget and operating budget process over the next few months with the agencies in particular in the beginning.
Thanks, Dave. So as Dave mentioned, there will be a lot of discussion and future meetings with all of you to set guidance for the budget, but it does take us almost a full year to prepare the budget for the upcoming year. So we're going to be kicking off the capital process relatively soon, in just five weeks. So the capital budget will kick off March 19th. We'll have a five-week request period, followed by briefings with the mayor's office. We develop the budget over the summer and present it to the finance, to the common council in September, followed by finance committee briefings and amendments. So the dates in the fall are all set by the common council and finance committee calendar, and those dates are pretty set in stone. The operating budget side, we anticipate kicking off on June 17th and having a five-to-six-week request period that goes through July and having briefings in August. We might adjust these slightly depending on what the guidance is and how much we are asking agencies to pull together during this time. So they're marked as tentative, but this should give you a roadmap of when to expect to hear from us in the next few months. And one thing I wanted to mention is, you know, we've been talking about the budget gap is 27 million, but again, that's really an estimate based on some assumptions. And the first part of the operating budget planning process is for us to go through a cost-to-continue exercise with all agencies where we really evaluate what's in their base budget, what are some changes or unavoidable contract changes that are coming up, or things that we have to adjust and build into their base for the upcoming year. So we'll be starting that at the end of March. We'll be meeting with every single agency to go through their budget assumptions, and we expect to have a more refined cost-to-continue number and a better sense of our expenses by early May, at which point we'd come back to all of you to provide an updated number. So again, the four-part series is posted on our website. If you go to City of Madison Finance Budget, you can all reach out to us at citybudget@cityofmadison.com. You can also reach out to me and Dave directly. I've provided our emails here. And if you have specific questions, please let us know. We're open to developing additional materials, FAQs, proofreading blog posts, or anything you want to share with your constituents, and we are happy to meet with you one-on-one. So don't hesitate to reach out.
So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, but we're happy to answer questions based on what you've heard this evening, what you've read and watched over the last few weeks.
Thank you, Dave and Christine, for a very comprehensive briefing. We'll take questions from the council. I just want to remind you that there is no action item in front of us tonight, but this is your chance to ask these folks questions on what you just saw and heard. Obviously, it's not your last chance, but it's a good opportunity. So we'll start with Alder Uguer.
Yes, I noted the slide that gave the dates that were optional for having a referendum. And the latest this year would be the election in November, which would be before the final adoption of the budget. So what does that imply for the timeline of this body making a decision on whether or not we would go forward with a referendum?
I would imagine we're probably going to have to have a couple of options that would have to be considered by this body and might have to be put forward by the mayor or at least be prepared, depending on the outcome of a referendum, if the body so chooses to go down that path. And so that's what we'll need to work through over the next few weeks and months. And as I kind of referenced on one of the slides, we'll probably be asking you in the next few weeks to kind of signal to us a path that you want to go down, whether it's, for example, we want you to develop a budget with these two elements to it, or we want to go down a path of a referendum, or whatever it might be, so that we can kind of know that general parameters going forward. Obviously, if a referendum is an option and if it were to fail, then we have to be prepared with, you know, what are the options then that would need to be put into place in order to have a balanced budget that needs to be adopted in November by the council?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitiver?
So Director Schminiki, you told us in the past that we generally try to pay off our loans in 10 years. So does that mean that the debt service that we're paying today is capital improvements from 10 years ago? Or is there some larger span of time that we're paying on right now?
Thanks for that question. So most of our debt is repaid over 10 years. And so we've issued debt, most recently in the fall of 2023, actually, in just last month, we issued debt. And for the most part, that's paid for over 10 years. Sometimes it's paid for over 20 years.
So then, we're paying, what we're paying now in debt service is debt that was incurred in 2013, approximately.
Approximately, that would be the last year and then years in between.
Okay. Yeah, just trying to get a sense of under which administration. You talked about the residence-based charges, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood, I think I understand, but I want to make sure so that, like, for example, you're paying an urban forestry charge based on my four-person household versus it's the same charge as if I'm in a one-person apartment?
So it's a little more, you know, there's a little more complexity to that, but yes, there's a sort of charge schedule that's set up. There is sort of a differential in terms of how much of the total charge is, for example, put on commercial properties versus residential properties. And then some of that is depending on, you know, maybe how much street frontage you have and things like that in terms of how it's distributed.
So it wouldn't be the same?
Not based on, for example, the value of the home or anything like that.
But so, because it's like street, street frontage and stuff, a four-person home would probably pay more than a one-person apartment?
Well, the apartment as a whole would pay more.
Right, right, right.
Right.
But each individually?
We haven't gotten quite, we can analyze that for you, but yeah, it's probably...
Just to understand the aggressiveness?
Yeah, there's some differences there, yeah.
The difference between four people in a home and one person in a home, each home pays the same amount.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yes.
So like, yeah, okay. Do we know what percentage of residents have taken advantage of the MADCAP funds?
I think it's a relatively low percentage, but I don't have that number in front of me.
The last update I got was, and I don't, sorry, I don't remember the exact number, but it's in the hundreds of people, not...
Hundreds of people?
Yes.
Oh, that's very low. Okay.
But keep in mind, Alder, that not everyone in the city is eligible.
Right.
For it.
Right.
So it's not out of the city's total population, it's a subset of the population that is at certain, at or below certain income levels.
Right.
But yes, it is still a relatively small amount.
So perhaps we could do a better job of publicizing.
Doing our best.
Yeah. Okay, and then, this is my last question. If we could move to a two-year budget, what would that mean for us in terms of the solutions that we're talking about, particularly if we think about referendum?
It really would not have any impact. You have to, in effect, approve a levy each year, even with a biennial budget approach. And so effectively, you have to review the budget each year. It may not be in the level of detail, you know, one year to the next, but the council does need to, in effect, approve a property tax levy each year, and that levy limit calculation happens each year, and we receive state aid annually and things like that.
But if we were to go to referendum, we would not be able to do that on a two-year basis if we had a two-year budget?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Thank you. I have a few questions. Pardon me, I'm going to have to go back and forth between a couple of things right now. So looking at, you mentioned in the videos that you prepared for us, something about a formula that the state uses to calculate shared revenue. And I'm trying to make sense of how we are at 134% for property taxes, and yet we're 47% of shared, in the shared revenue. Can you explain how that happened?
Are you ready for a little history lesson?
I love history.
So the state has a shared revenue formula, and it's also called county and municipal aid. So we receive municipal aid. Prior to 2003, that formula worked every year. And effectively what it did, and it worked similar to how the school aid formula works today, meaning it sort of looks at all the communities in the state and sort of arrays all of them based on their property value per resident. And so in Madison, we have a property value per resident that's above the statewide average. It's not the highest in the state, but it is above the statewide average. And so what the formula, when it worked, is meant to do was look at all of those property tax bases in all of those communities around the state and try to equalize them so that everybody could, every community around the state could provide sort of a bundle of services at the same tax rate. So the idea was to provide some equity, some equalization, as it's called, across the state. So the cost to plow a street in Manassas had roughly the same sort of cost to a property taxpayer on a rate basis as it did in Madison. And so because we were above average, we got less state aid and we were more reliant on property taxes. And so that formula was in place, and that's why we have the differentials that we have today. Next, we move to 2003 to 2012. There were a series of reductions to shared revenue over that time to balance the state budget. The way that those reductions were apportioned, they fell more heavily on places like Madison that had that sort of higher property value per resident. Places that had lower property value per resident, like Milwaukee or Beloit, they got a smaller share of that overall cut. And so that was kind of baked in. Now we move to the most recent state budget, significant increase in shared revenue. There's no question about that. A new formula was set up, and equity was measured more on size of community. How many residents do you have in your community? Smaller places on a population basis got much more per capita than larger places, with the exception of cities that already got significant amounts of shared revenue. They got a percentage increase as sort of a de minimis. So Milwaukee, which gets a lot of shared revenue, was able to get a 15% increase on that huge base of shared revenue, which was about $37 per capita. In contrast, Madison got about $10 per capita. So it just kind of continued that process of Madison gets less, you know, a lower amount of shared revenue and is more reliant on property taxes. Does that help kind of explain why we're at where we're at today?
Yeah.
Okay.
A little bit. So the next thing I want to kind of clarify is Milwaukee has a sales tax.
Sure.
What is preventing us from being able to implement a small additional sales tax to...
That's a great question. So it all starts with state law, right? Under state law, that is what gives us the authority to do everything we do in the Prior to Milwaukee receiving that sales tax authority, no city in the state had general sales tax authority. Counties did. Counties had that option. And so Dane County has a half percent sales tax. Milwaukee and Milwaukee County, too, they each have their own pension system, okay? Madison, all the other communities, school districts, so on in the state, the state itself is all in one system called the Wisconsin Retirement System. City Milwaukee, County Milwaukee, School District Milwaukee, they each have their own pension systems. When you look at the city of Milwaukee and what's happened to it over the last 30-plus years, it has shrunk in population. Its tax base today, its property tax base, is smaller than Madison's. We are one-third the size in population of Milwaukee. So Milwaukee had a service level and staffing level for a city 30 years ago that it's now has a smaller city, smaller tax base. It had to pay pensions to that staff that, you know, was employed at that time for a larger city. It basically had gotten to a point where it could not pay for its pension system. And they were facing, we talk about $27 million, they were facing hundreds of millions of dollars of gap. They were looking at 25% cuts in their police budgets, their fire budgets, every service that they delivered. So they went to the state legislature and they said, look, either we cut or we get sales tax. And you can imagine who was going, besides the mayor and so on, who else was going to talk when we talk about police and fire and so on. And so in the end, Milwaukee said, we need a 2% sales tax, and we need that increase in shared revenue that I mentioned earlier. That'll get us through at least a few years. We're probably going to face a problem still down the road because we still have this huge pension cliff. And so the legislature, I think, and the governor kind of came together ultimately on that for all of those reasons. And so that's kind of where we are today, but ultimately it comes back to the legislature has to give that approval through a change to state law. And so they did that for the city of Milwaukee, they did it for the county of Milwaukee to help with those sort of specific issues, basically in terms of the solvency of the largest city in the state. Now, is that an option for Madison? I mean, it's an option theoretically, but it does ultimately require an action in the legislature to do that. We can't do that on our own, if that helps.
So I'm trying to figure out what the least regressive way to fill this gap would be, because any way I look, we're cutting services, we're cutting, you know, staff, we're cutting pay, none of that's good. Are there, what is the least regressive way, I guess, like, that we can fix this and without, like...
Well, I think that's why we're here today.
Fair.
I don't think we're going to solve all that today or this evening, obviously.
You don't have the answer for me?
I mean, regressivity, obviously, it's both an academic concept, it's a philosophical concept, a number of things that need to be worked through. I think, though, you kind of put your finger on it of like, it's not just regressivity in terms of the revenue mix, it's also regressivity in terms of the service mix that's delivered, right? And I think that's a value question and proposition for the council. I mean, you make value decisions all the time in each budget. And so I think, what are those sort of expenditures, if you feel you can identify any, that you feel are lower priority or not as regressive as something else? We don't have an income tax as an option. The state does. And the state doesn't share that revenue or much of it with the city of Madison. The state has a sales tax, Madison doesn't. And so those are ways to make sort of the revenue base more progressive. For example, with a sales tax, we can export some of that cost to visitors, people who don't live in the city of Madison, who come into the city, but we, you know, we can't do that. We have the property tax. And so those are lots of considerations. But I think, you know, you appropriately identified the bundle of services that are provided is also an issue of regressivity versus progressivity as well.
I guess, I find it interesting that the state has such a surplus, and yet sharing revenue tends to be not as equitable. So thank you, no more questions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Thank you so much for this, and I just want to really, I know it's not necessarily a question, but a quick comment. I really, really appreciate you and want to recognize the competency of your department for putting together this work and, I don't know, helping us not to be worse than we are right now, given what we've given to you. So thank you for that. On that note, I just want to understand better about how the COVID-19 pandemic impacted this. Can you help us better understand that, like, it seems like there might be discrepancy on like whether it was decisions before the pandemic that caused this or after the pandemic? So can you help us put that into context?
Thanks for that question. So when we're talking about the impact of the pandemic, we're really talking about it on the revenue side, not so much on the expenditure side. And so when we look at the sort of pre-pandemic trend in our revenues that we take in, and there's a formula that the United States Department of Treasury kind of put out there for all communities to use to kind of say, well, what was your, what would you have expected your revenues to be prior to the pandemic? And what are they, you know, going through those years of the pandemic? And so when you look at the city's revenues, we remain about $33 million below that pre-pandemic trend line. And some of the reason for that, for example, when you compare those trend lines with what happened with the state sales tax or the county sales tax, they've returned to their pre-pandemic trend line and gone above it because the sales tax can sort of capture that economic activity that's happening as a result of all of the pandemic assistance to individuals and families, or all of the economic activity from the pent-up demand that happened over those, you know, few years of the pandemic, as we've seen. That's why you have a huge state surplus, for example, in their budget. But the city, the way our tax structure is and the limits we have under state law, we can't increase the property tax to sort of reflect that additional economic activity. You probably have noticed when we've talked about the budget that property values in the city have gone up double-digit. We can't increase the levy by that amount because of how the levy limits are calculated. And we don't have a sales tax, so we can't sort of capture that. We don't have an income tax. And so those are some of the reasons why we're still below where we were prior to the pandemic. And so that's a bit of a contributor to what we're seeing. It's not all of it, but it's a portion of it.
Right, so, okay, thank you for that. I mean, just to put that into context for us, when we talk about, like, we lost, so we basically lost $33 million, right?
We're $33 million below where we would have otherwise been.
And then we have a $27 million structural deficit. So then, like, putting those numbers together, basically, like, we would have been not...
Yeah, it's meant to be sort of a comparison. It's not, you know, an exact sort of thing. Obviously, we don't know if that pre-pandemic trend line would actually have happened for the pandemic. We don't know, right?
Right.
But it's sort of a way to give a sense of, we don't have a way to capture that economic growth that's happened that other, like Dane County government's been able to capture through the sales tax, and state government's been able to capture through the state sales tax and the state income tax.
Okay, thank you for helping me understand that better. And so I just wanted to clarify that state law about, like, police and fire. So that means that we cannot eliminate those positions, but we could reduce, like, is it eliminate only, like, could we eliminate, like, civilian positions or like, and then are we allowed to reduce the, like, position, like, how much they make, I guess, is what I'm trying to say?
Sure, that's a great question. And so it is a maintenance of effort requirement. So for the police department, there's three components to it. One is that the amount spent to employ law enforcement officers, so your comment about civilians, that are not included in that calculation. So the amount spent from one year to the next has to remain the same or greater in that subsequent year. So that's one test. The second test or option is the percentage of the budget for the entire, or I think it's for the law enforcement costs, position costs, as a share of the budget, needs to remain the same or greater from one year to the next. Or the third option is the total number of law enforcement officers employed. So not just positions, but filled positions, needs to be the same or greater from one year to the next. That's the, those are the police criteria. You have to meet one of those.
I see.
On the fire and EMS side, there's four criteria. So one of them is the amount of spending for basically commission, police, or fire and EMS positions, the number of positions, filled positions, the level of training and licensure, that's the third one, or response times. You have to meet two out of the four for that. And then if, the penalty for not meeting that is a 15% reduction in shared revenue. So that equals to about $1.2 million.
I see, okay.
Yep, so there are, I think you correctly pointed out, there are some different ways to look at that, where reductions could occur, and the maintenance of effort met, so...
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking back through my questions, so that's why I'm, like, pausing. I guess, so there isn't necessarily, because we don't have a state income tax, there's no way to distribute this across income levels? Is this, is there a way to distribute it across property levels? I don't know how to explain this nicely, but like, is there a way to say, like, okay, this is a higher-end unit, so it would, or property, so it could tax higher than, like, something that's lower-end or more affordable?
So that's a great question in terms of the property tax. You mentioned income tax, the state has an income tax.
But we don't.
We don't, right. The property tax, it has to be the same percentage. There's no way to have a differential depending on the type of property or the value of that property. It has to be the same percentage for every property.
Okay. And I know I'm asking a lot of questions. I promise you I'm not trying to, like, quiz you for 20 minutes. But what would be the impact on increased housing costs, particularly like for renters, for homeowners, like, I understand it's like a 9% increase of the city's portion of the bill. What, as a renter, like, what would that mean? It would, like, how much would my rent increase or anyone else's rent increase?
We haven't done that calculation in terms of renters, obviously. It's the owner of the property that pays the property taxes and how that flows back to renters. I mean, we could, we could take a look at that. In terms of an average value home, if you look at the total tax bill, if all of the $27 million was raised through the property tax, that would increase that tax bill by a little under 4%.
Okay, a little under 4%. Okay.
About 3.7%.
Okay.
All other things being equal, right? That's, because other taxing jurisdictions, like the school district, the county, for example, they can also do referenda, right, to increase tax bills. We don't know what they're going to do.
Yeah. I see, okay. And then, lastly... Yeah. I see. Okay. And then, um, lastly, from what you were, from the ways that we can offset the deficit, that being increased revenues or decreased expenses, it seems like the strongest ways to do that are to increase property taxes or cut positions. And like, those other kind of like add, like, for example, like, increase our revenues through, like, fees and stuff is not the main, it's not like a primary method to increase, to, to offset the budget or deficit.
I think your point is that, like, with our local revenues, we'd have to increase those by a lot, right, in order to generate the same amount that, you know, we'd have maybe a smaller percentage increase in the property tax. Now, in terms of reductions, there's a broad array of approaches on that. I don't know if we're sort of selecting one over the other at the moment, but, you know, we kind of laid out the very big picture of what the expenditure options might be.
I mean, I mean, just to say like a simplified version of like what we saw is like basically like either we increase property taxes or cut positions and
Or a mix of.
Or a mix of the two. And so, like, for, on that, I know that there are some of my colleagues that might be hesitant to increasing property taxes. So, have you thought through ways that we can cut positions and like, will, like, throughout this process, like, will you work with us on like what that means to cut positions?
Definitely will. That's,
Yeah.
We'll work with you on different options. You want to look at different scenarios.
Yeah, sweet. Uh, thank you. And so, like, just for next steps, like, I know you're coming to our March 5 meeting. Are you planning on coming to others and like?
I'm sure we will, but that, that's what we've planned so far is to kind of walk you through in a little more step-by-step process. And, um, you know, I think your, your questions are kind of touching on these things, but, you know, what are your values in these areas and how do you want to proceed in terms of the general outline of the budget?
Okay, sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a lot of questions for you, and then other Alders had the exact same questions for you, so I have fewer now. Thank you. So, if we go to a referendum this year, does that mean that we will also have to do one next year? Or how does that work?
I, that, that's hard to say. I wouldn't expect it would have to happen every single year. The point in what we, in that presentation on how the referendum has to be structured was just to point out that we can't sort of permanently solve it with one referendum, for example. If that's the only, if that's the only path that's gone down, because it, in contrast to, let's say, some other revenue source that's a percentage, like a sales tax or something that might grow with economic activity, this sort of increment that's added from the referendum, it doesn't grow. It's just a fixed amount. And so, when you kind of compare that to the fact that costs in the budget are going to continue to grow, whether it's to pay employees or inflation or so on, that referendum effect is going to diminish somewhat each year. And so, just to point out that the, the issue of the long-range oversight of the budget, that's going to continue out into the future and these options. It will make a dramatic change, as you saw in the trends, but we still have to kind of think about, we still live with levy limits. We don't have a sales tag, you know, all those sorts of things are still there.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, when it comes to, I guess, the property tax itself, what is the effective tax rate for the property tax? You said it was a flat rate. Do you know what that is?
Yeah, it's about, if, when we deduct, you know, when we take into account the school levy tax credit, so these credits provided by the state, it's about 1.9% times the assessed value of a property. That's the total tax bill. So, that's the city, the county, the school district, and the technical college.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then you were briefly talking about the Madcap program a little bit. Is that a permanent program?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Actually, it's only been, it's a, it's only been allowed by the PSC for
The water side of it is, is a pilot for, I think it's for a few years. The other elements of it, so the city puts in general fund money to, to help pay for the effect of that on the special charges and stormwater and so on. But yeah, thank you, Mayor. For the, the water side of it, in terms of using water user fee revenues to help pay the cost, that's a, that's a fixed amount of time under the PSC order that allowed that.
We'd have to go back to the, we, we will go back to the PSC and ask for permission to continue it, but it, but it's subject to their approval.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then I feel like I have, know the answer to this, but I'll ask anyway. Can we expect any additional state aid from the state? Is there a chance?
So, the state does its budget every other year. In the budget that was enacted most recently, one of the changes in the shared revenue program was to take a portion of the state's sales tax, in effect, sales tax revenues, and have that pool of money fund, you know, shared revenue. And that the growth in the sales tax would be applied to that sort of amount for shared revenue. So, we will see a small amount of growth each year in shared revenue, depending on what's happening with the state's sales tax. We've already built that in to the estimates. The budget process for the state, the legislature will be sort of back a year from now. The governor will introduce the budget for the next two years a year from now. So, that's kind of the next major opportunity barring, you know, sort of separate legislation that might happen.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for this very informational presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
I wanted to echo others' gratitude for all of the information you came with us, with you tonight for us, as well as before this meeting. I had a question on the revenue side in non-property tax revenues. The materials mention that increasing existing fees or implementing new special charges would take additional studies to determine the cost of those services. I'm wondering about the feasibility and kind of timeline of those studies in the context of the other budget work we'll be doing.
So, the studies refer to special charges specifically. We, we typically, so when we look at, for example, the urban forestry special charge or the resource recovery special charge, we usually can put those into place about halfway through the year. So, you get about six months of yield in that first year before you move to the permanent effect. So, the process takes a few months to sort of do the investigation of, what's that broad-based need? What are the arguments for it? What are the methodologies to distribute the charge? And then it's kind of a two-step process in terms of legislative approval by the council in that we can put it into a budget and then we kind of have to return with the authorizing ordinance as a second step. And so, that does take some time. So, normally, we get about six months of yield in that first year. And then after that, we get the annualized amount.
Okay. And so, if we were to adopt a new special charge as part of the 2025 budget, would we have that information in time this fall? Or does that compete with other priorities that, would the six-month timeline apply next year with the charge in effect? Or do we have to do the six months and then authorize the charge?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we could start now on a special charge and the background on it and have, you know, most of that background ready, depending on the, you know, the area we're looking at. Transportation is probably an area that we understand the best, for example. But I think either way, even with the budget being adopted, you know, we still have to kind of set up the mechanisms, you know, it needs to be added to the municipal services bill and things like that. So, it does take a, you know, a few months to get that all into place after it's authorized.
Thank you. That's very helpful. That's all for now. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro, call?
Thank you. Well, my questions are kind of follow-ups from a few of the comments. So, I'm going to start from the last one from NGR. So, when you said that 1.9, that there's, it's 1.9% for taxes for all the categories, just wanted to clarify. So, you're saying, I mean, of all of those categories, of that 1.9%, only 39% comes to the city or about something like that? I just wanted to make that.
35, yep.
35%, that's even less. Okay. So, so yeah, it's 1.9%, but then on top of that, we only get 35% of that bill?
Right. So, our percentage is roughly 7.5%? I mean, 0.7%.
Yes, okay.
Alder, can you move your mic a little?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Just, I think that's a critical number to realize that it's not really 1.9%.
It's about 35% of the bill for the city levy.
Yes. Okay. And then, um, when Alder Bennett talks about future ways on having projections on reducing, reducing staff, can those projections also include what the impact that is? Because, I mean, again, if we're going to reduce staff for, for streets, that means snow removal, garbage pickup, all those other things?
Yeah, I, I don't think we can talk about reducing positions.
Without the services.
Services that those positions deliver. So, absolutely.
Right. Like, I mean, again, if we're going, if we're going to cut from community development, then that means the shelter, you know, all, all of those things. So, when, the other thing that she brought up, yeah, the, the 15% from the shared revenue, since we all complaining about how little shared revenue is, that equals 1.2 when it comes to the police department and fire. Can you remind me how much money was the cost of continue, the increase from the last budget to this budget for, for the, for those services? Was it more than 1.2 million dollars?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, do you have kind of?
Off the top of my head, it's probably five to six million.
Six million dollars?
For both departments together, it's very much.
And there's also a, a future increase based on contract that is coming down the pipe for 2025?
So, the police, union, commissioned staff do have already a contract in place that has a 3%.
Okay. And then, so then going back down to the one question from, I guess, also from NGR. So, you did mention in the presentation that the referendum was a one-time thing? And then you clarified some things there for, for him. So, I, again, so we are going to do a referendum, we're going to ask for X amount of money to get us out of the hole that we're in. But the following year, we go, we go back to the regular schedule of taxes of the 0.7%? Or how does that work?
So, let's back up a little bit. Under the, under state law, in terms of the way the referendum has to be structured, you can do either a one-time increase. So, let's say it's $10 million. You can do $10 million once and it goes away. That's one option. The other option is to do 10 million, and that 10 million stays there permanently out into the future. But 10 million permanently becomes a smaller and smaller share of the budget over, you know, over time as costs go up. So, that 10 million doesn't grow, like, we don't apply the net new construction factor and the levy limit to that increment. It's just a fixed dollar amount out into the future.
Okay. So then, and there was something about fees for parks and libraries that I quite didn't understand where we were going with that?
So, one possible option to look at with special charges is to, rather than using the property tax to pay for a portion of the cost of parks, instead shift that to a special charge. Now, we'd have to identify, you know, what's the broad sort of public benefit from that? What's the methodology for distributing that cost and so on that we can sort of defend in terms of setting up the special charge? So, it's a possibility. We haven't delved into it too deeply yet, but it's probably one area we could look at, because it's, it's a sort of, you know, service that's delivered in a, in a certain
Well, it's a prime service for, for real. But I, I thought, I thought we were talking about like increasing parks fees and things like that. That would not be equitable at all.
In the special charge context.
Yes, okay, good. And then, can you refresh my memory, what is the current room tax percentage?
Sure. It's 10%.
And that, are we, are we like competitive with the rest of the state and the big cities around us?
Yeah, that's a great question. Under state law, the maximum room tax is 8%. Unless you have debt outstanding to either construct or remodel a convention center. And we have debt outstanding. And with that debt outstanding, we can then go above the 8%. And so, this council has adopted increases that have now taken us to a 10% rate. We're among the highest in the state. We're, we're, I would say, higher than most communities in Dane County. Some other places that have 10% are, for example, City of Brookfield, places like that in suburban Milwaukee.
So, but are we compatible with places like Chicago?
Yeah, I would say we're probably, it's difficult to make some of those comparisons because they have sales taxes and certain other types of special taxes. But yeah, I would say we're maybe, in terms of larger cities, slightly on the lower end, depending on who you're comparing with, right? Like, like in Orlando, for example, you don't need a very high tax to collect a lot of money, given the volume there. But a Chicago, Minneapolis and so on, we're probably slightly below where they are.
And, and the same for parking. I mean, like, parking in other places is super expensive. So, when we do those analysis, I would also like to understand what an increase on parking will, will have. Because again, I know it will be very small compared to what we have, but we're not, we definitely going to need two different paths, because if we just, we cannot just go with the referendum, because we don't know what the solution is going to be. So, I, I like to understand that.
When you talk about parking, do you mean parking fees?
Parking fees, not parking tickets, no. Parking fees to parking our
Right. So, parking fees, and that's why we sort of started with that foundation of the, of how we build a budget. We have a fund for the parking utility. So, fees from that go into that fund to pay for the cost of operating the parking ramps.
So, that's a, that's kind of enterprise?
Available for the general fund.
Okay, so it's a, an enterprise type of thing?
Right.
Okay, got it. So, yeah, definitely I wouldn't want to increase the parking tickets or whatever. Got it. I, I forgot about that. Okay. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, they say that misery loves company. And I guess, my question is, you know, what is the budget health of surrounding communities to Madison?
Sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
My question is, what is the, what is the budget health of surrounding communities to Madison? Health, yep. And can the county provide any assistance here? And if, if not, are we just 77 square miles surrounded by, surrounded in debt, I guess?
So, I think communities around the state are facing challenges, including communities in Dane County. We have had communities in Dane County already go to the voters to get increases in property taxes above the allowable rate under state law. Middleton is a good example. I think the Village of Shorewood Hills did something recently. So, when we, the most recent year that we have data for, which was 2022, there were over 30 communities, municipalities around the state that went to referendum to increase their property tax, and most of those passed. So, this is not a unique-to-Madison issue in terms of having sufficient revenue. And even with the increase in shared revenue that occurred, communities are still facing challenges because the levy limit doesn't grow that much, and inflation is still pretty, you know, above, you know, sort of near-term rates that we've seen. So, there are, there are still considerable challenges out there for communities around the state.
And Alder, I think just based on conversations I've had, it's, I'd say it's highly likely that two surrounding communities will go to referendum this year, and at least three others I have heard are considering it. So, I think it's actually, there may be a So I think it's actually, there may be a lot of folks going that direction.
And can the county provide any assistance or?
That's really up to the county. Um, you know, you, you can ask the county. But I, you know, they face their own budget challenges too. They have a levy limit. They do have, I think, the benefit of a sales tax. But, you know, I talked about how sales taxes have been going up. That rate of growth has slowed dramatically, um, over the last year or so. So, you know, I don't think we can kind of say, oh, the county doesn't have budget challenges. They, they have their own budget challenges as well for a, a different array of services than what the, the city provides.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Yay. This is really just a continuation of my phone call from earlier today. Either today or yesterday, I can't remember which day it was. But in short, I'm just wondering, so like a cost comparison. So Chief Barnes just talked about like the state of Madison's public safety, and because the numbers seem to be pretty good and crime is down, that means hopefully that investing in, investing in violence prevention program is work, is working. And so for me, I'm just thinking about like what we cut or what we don't cut or what we create to sort of like get through all of this, not losing focus on crime prevention. And so I'm just wondering if you all can put together something in the coming weeks or month or whatever that takes a look at what we have invested in violent, like any programming deemed violence prevention. And, um, because I would imagine if we would stop investing in those programs, we're going to probably likely see an uptick in crime. So I really just want to see a comparison of where was crime, like, let's just, where are we at, 2024? I'm tired. So what was crime in 2020 compared to today? And then where was our investment in violence prevention program in 2020 compared to today? Just to see the comparison side by side. So yeah, along with all my other requests from this morning.
We can work on that with you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, this is more of a philosophical question, and a lot of my questions have been answered. But tonight, um, one of the registrants questioned, um, spending. And as we are making these decisions, as, as we're going through what you presented tonight, could you speak on, um, what is the correlation or the impact on the 2025 deficit based upon where we are now? I hope I captured that.
Well, that's what we've tried to show you this evening is what we estimate in terms of costs to continue current services in 2025. So the entire sort of total array of services the city provides right now, paying for those costs next year, and comparing that to how much we can increase our revenues under state law and what we think other revenues might increase. And so the comparison of those two numbers is a, is a deficit of about 27 million. And so that's what we're trying to address. Now, things that might be decided upon now that might result in added services next year in the future could contribute to a larger deficit, for example. So those are things you might want to, as a body, keep in mind, and which is, you know, I think philosophically, you kind of said, you know, spending proposals should probably be considered in the context of the budget rather than outside of the budget. But sometimes we do need to make adjustments throughout the year, but that's usually for services that are already in place. You know, we may have a cost overrun or something like that versus adding new, new programs. But I think, I think that answers your question, but, okay.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Romo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dave and Christine, for just a lot of work and thought that we have to go through. I have sort of two unrelated questions. One is about the special charges. Is that the same as impact fees?
No.
And can you explain, because you didn't mention impact fees, I don't think, in your presentation?
So, um, special charges are basically to pay the cost of providing a service, so an operating cost for the most part. So let's say, um, for resource recovery, we look at the cost of our recycling services in the streets division, and we say, well, this is the amount of that cost, and we distribute that cost over, through some sort of methodology over, you know, property in the city. Impact fees are another sort of what allowable thing under state law, and they're basically related to, um, new development. And a geographic area is usually identified, and they, for the most part, have to be used to pay for capital costs. So it may be, for example, a park's impact fee might be used to acquire parkland. An engineering impact fee might be used to pay for sewer improvements, for example, or street construction in a plat. And those are, um, very, you know, closely defined under state law in terms of what you can use impact fees for. And generally, you cannot use them for operating costs. And so that doesn't really help with the city's operating budget deficit that we're talking about this evening.
And I was, this was brought to my attention by one of our city committee members about there is an impact fee that helps, that addresses public safety costs associated with new development that's allowed in state law, and even makes an exception for affordable housing. And I'm wondering if we've looked at that as a potential source?
So I believe what's being referred to is not an impact fee. Uh, there is a provision under the levy limits.
The what?
The levy limits. So for, there's a calculation in there that allows you, if you have, um, it's all tied to new, um, parcels in, so new single-family homes in the city, uh, less than a half an acre, and the price of that house is less than 80% of the average price in the city. And so you do that whole calculation, and you can multiply each of those housing, you know, houses by a thousand dollars and add it to the levy, and you have to use it for public safety costs. So Madison has generally had around 10, 11, 12 houses. So it generates about $10,000 on the levy limit. So it's not a significant revenue source.
Like the new subdivision that was just pulled off the agenda tonight would, would have hundreds of housing with that.
But not houses that are priced below 80% of the, you know, average price in the city. Most of them are above the average.
Well, what I would like to see, maybe not by our next meeting, is like on the special charges page, you have a list of other options. Could you add more detail, like what that might be if we looked at that further, just so we have a sense of what the different, you mentioned the transportation, the library, parks? And if you could just add more details as we go forward so we can kind of assess what those look like?
We can try. We, we don't have a lot of detail. Those are really concepts to look at. What I tried to do, or what we tried to do on that slide is to sort of give you that big picture of what a dollar per month per residence raises. And that's sort of generally what you're going to get from each special charge. There might be some differential on that, but it's going to be relatively modest. But yes, we can talk a little bit more about it, but particularly probably in the transportation area, but the other areas, we just, we have not done much work on those, so. But we can maybe relate it to, this is how the urban forestry special charge works as an example.
And my last question is kind of two-part, like, you know, it's sort of the political angle of with the, the maps going to the state Supreme Court. You know, there is always a silver lining, maybe, that the state legislature could change, maybe. Just put it, just put that out there so you don't feel totally glum. And, but the, the question I want to really finish with is, it looks like the school district wants to go to referendum in the fall. I mean, what's the politics of to referendum? It doesn't really seem really, um, positive for most people. I don't know that, you know, some people can say, oh, the schools, but then are they going to say the same, the same love for the city? I don't know. I don't know if you have answers, but, um.
I think that's part of the discussion that you're going to all have to have.
Everyone, that might be something to consider.
Yep.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lattimer-Birth?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I do have a list of questions, but I'm not going to go down. I will email, um, you them. I really, really thank both of you for, like, taking the initiative to, to educate us and to, um, you know, continue to support our decision-making, because I think we're beginning to realize that, um, we're the other half of the decision. So, um, as far as the budget and what we spend money on. But I want to just, uh, ask you right quick. First, I would like to ask you, if you could, um, at some point, as you're developing these slides and, um, you know, this, you know, online education for us, if you will, could you go into the weeds and the details on referendum? Because I think that's probably something that's going to come up, and we really need to understand it. Or tell us where we can find more information? And then I also want to ask, what if we go to referendum and it fails? Then what do we do?
We tried to give you the detail on the referendum process in terms of, um, you know, there's specific language that needs to be used. It can either be a one-time increase or a permanent increase. You have to show that as a percentage increase in what's allowable under state law. So there's specific language that has to be used for that. And then, um, I'm sorry, what was your second?
Uh, my second question is, what happens if we do go to referendum? We vote to go to referendum, it goes to referendum, and then it fails with the public? What would be our plan B?
Well, I think that question was asked, asked right at the beginning.
Oh, it was? Did I miss it? Okay. What was it?
You know, I think we'll probably, you know, as we discuss these options with you, we'll probably have to have, you know, a plan B developed. I don't know what that is, but it'll have to, it may have to look at more reliance on local revenues instead of the property tax, for example. But we'll be working with you to try to, to develop those sort of backup options relative to what might happen if this body decides to go ahead with a referendum and a referendum were, uh, were to not be approved.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, just real quick, I just want to ask, um, so I'm understanding it, when you're talking about, you know, I'm simplifying here, but one is a one-time versus a set amount each year. I'm talking about the referendum, like, you know, say it's like $10 million each way, each year. When you said that, you know, it'll end up going down, that's because inflation will eat into, uh, the amount of money. And then if we do do something like a set amount, um, can that, can we go back and change that? Can that be changed? So let's say, yeah.
So the referendum has to be a set amount. That, that's what it is. And inflation eats away at it in the sense that the budget gets bigger, but that amount doesn't grow with inflation. The only way to change it is to do another referendum.
Okay. And then you talked real briefly, or you talked a lot, but just real briefly, I wanted to just ask. So it's likely that we'll have to do another referendum if we just keep going on the path that we're going as far as expenses? And I understand some of it has to do with city growth. But what's the likelihood of that? Where we'd have to go back in a few years?
I mean, it, it's difficult to predict that. I think I just have to go back to, you know, our only general revenue option is the property tax. We don't have other options at this time. Obviously, there could be legislative changes, but, um, you don't foresee that on the horizon. So I think our point is costs are growing faster than revenues. A, a referendum increase would help, obviously, shrink that gap considerably, but because it's a fixed amount rather than a percentage of our budget, for example, it will have diminished impact out into the future. And we just, you know, this body has to kind of keep that in mind as it's looking to the future in terms of long-range budget planning and balancing each year's budget. So is that an option in the future? It's always an option, yes.
Okay. And then the last one is just really a summary. I think you've talked about it, um, as far as policing. I wanted to know, um, first, uh, how do we compare to other police departments in state as far as like what we spend on policing and the cost?
Sure. So if you recall, one of those slides compared our per capita spending to, uh, the 35 largest cities in the state. Spending on police costs is roughly at the average statewide.
Okay. And then, um, and by the way, I did watch the videos. They're, they're great, and it helps us to ask more intelligent questions and not just rubber stamp stuff. The other thing is, um, I wanted to ask is, so on regarding policing, I think you answered it, but, um, I wanted to ask, how does the new law play against the general stance that some people take to say, just get rid of the police department or just reduce it? And I think what you said is that we'll be subject to, um, you know, a fine, if you will, and then obviously that also, a reduction would also result in a reduction of services for the police. Is that correct? In summarizing it that way?
If you're talking about the maintenance of effort, yeah, there are criteria that need to be met. If they're not met, then we lose 1.2 million dollars of shared revenue, 15% of our shared revenue. And then, yes, I think, you know, in terms of other questions that have come up, if positions are reduced, there is an impact on service levels, and those sort of need to be taken into account as, as you kind of think through the options.
Okay. Thank you so much. I know this is like, we're kind of pains, but it really does help us to try to do something different. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govinder Rajan?
Thank you. Quick couple of questions, kind of going off of that line of questioning about the referendum. If the referendum does fail, can we realistically cut our way out and maybe have some revenue
Well, I, I think as we laid out, yes, there's obviously a series of options there, but it also has a series of impacts that, you know, this body needs to think through in terms of services that either won't be provided or have to be reduced, or the revenue options have certain impacts. So we talked about special charges, for example. So yes, there probably are ways to get at that, but then we have questions around equity and things like that to, you know, to think through in terms of that other option or other path.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then I, I kind of was looking at this timeline, but it didn't answer this question. If this council does take up a referendum, when would we have to do, like, when would our vote have to be?
So I don't, and obviously, the general election, if the referendum is held in November, right, there's other options in the year, but if it's held in November, I think it's that week before the budget is adopted.
Okay.
No, but, but your, your vote, the council, the council has to vote to put it on the ballot, and there's a deadline for that 70 days before the election. I'm not sure it would be prudent to wait that long.
Right.
I would agree. Thank you. And then my last question would actually be for Attorney Haas. I feel bad, he's been quiet this whole time. How many votes would it take from council to get that onto the ballot?
To a simple majority, 11 votes.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro, call.
Um, I'm sorry. Okay, this is my last question for tonight, but, so next meeting, we have a schedule to have a little bit more discussions on this topic. So what is a suggestion from either you or the mayor on how to prepare for that discussion? And talking about timelines, right, like, I get the timeline of, of the referendum questions being set, being set up, but a budget needs to be started. So I guess I would like to hear what is the expectation and the need regardless of? expectation and the need regardless of the referendum or whatever decision? Like, what kind of direction are you looking for? That is now, right? Like, the budget initially starts in April, and now we're just two months ahead of that. So what is the expectation?
I think you've started that process by reading what we've sent out, spending that time. And I think that next step is thinking through, you know, what are the values in terms of the services and priorities that the city provides? And what, how do you want those resources allocated? And, and are there areas where you think there should be less service? Or is this really a discussion around revenues, you know, in order to maintain current service levels? I think those are sort of the threshold questions that we'll try to work through. And I, I think where we need to get to is some form of, whether it's a resolution or, you know, I don't know exactly the vehicle for it, but some signal of what path or paths very generally, and probably only one or two of them, that you'd like us to go down in building the budget over the next several months culminating in your adoption of the budget in November.
So what is the timeline for that, for that, putting that?
I would say very soon after that March 5th meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll meet with you on March 5th, and then probably, you know, in the meeting, council meeting or two after that, getting some form of general direction.
So in, at least two, the minimum two, two councils after the March, we should have a resolution on the table for us to vote on?
That's.
So you guys can start building the budget based on that direction?
Right.
Alder, the only thing I would add is that, and I have said this, I think, to most of you, if not all of you, it, part of the reason that we're here tonight, and part of the reason that the finance staff have done all of this great work to get this information in front of you so early in the budget process, is that at some point quite soon, I have to give all the city agencies instructions about how to start building their budgets. And given how wildly different the options are this year, I want you all to send a signal about what direction you want to go, right? So just in hypotheticals, if you want to solve this budget gap primarily through cutting services and staff, I need to know that so that I can tell the agencies that that's the direction you want to go. And they should start to prepare that version of their budgets, right? If, on the other hand, and just to go to the full other extreme, if you would like to go to referendum and do that in, you know, sort of the biggest way possible, that's a completely different set of instructions to staff. I don't want staff to have to do extra work, if at all possible. I'd like to give them a clear signal on what we collectively, as decision-makers, want them to do. So that's part of why we're here so early, is that, that we are in the process now of crafting that message to staff. And I don't want to send them a signal that you all are not comfortable with. So I think that's, that's the sort of why the timeframe. And I do think Dave is right, that in the, the sort of late March, early April timeframe, to have some signal from this body would be really important.
So one, it would be nice to have that timeline, just like we do on the budget page, where we have the dates, this, whatever, to just, to incorporate the budget ask. But there's also, for this body to understand that we do need two paths if we're going to go with referendum. Because we cannot just go with a path on November 10 to break it through. We need a path now in April so they can, we can give staff the worst-case scenario to prepare for in case the, the referendum doesn't pass. Just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
So Alder, I would say, if, if the path that this body wants to take is to go to referendum, then yes, we do need a Plan B. If the path that this body wants to take is to do some other combination of cuts and/or revenues, then it's really just one path.
Okay. But I guess all that kind of spelled out with some kind of timeline, I think, would be great.
We can bring that back.
Thank you.
So I would also just recommend, in terms of your question and how to prepare for the next meeting, I understand the desire to have finance staff solve the problem for you. I often feel that desire as well. But I don't think it's actually helpful to say, well, couldn't we solve it this way? I think it's helpful to ask them either tonight or in the intervening days, what are the implications of? So what are the implications of making a cut of this size? What are the implications of using this kind of fee, right? What are the implications of, you know, going to a referendum of this size? So that, that you can understand the potential scenarios. And then, again, as Dave said, based on your values and priorities, you know, come to that discussion prepared to articulate which direction you think we should go. Because that's really what I think the conversation will be about is, and, and finance staffer are creating sort of a structure around that conversation, but what direction do we collectively want to go based on our values?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
So just to clarify, you want us, in the next less than two months, to give you all direction on which way we'd like to go?
At a very high level, yes.
Okay. I just want to say, we have work to do. Two months? Jeez. And... That's a thing.
It is indeed a thing, Alder.
Yeah. So, and then, next, have you thought about, or do you have an idea of what the public outreach plan will look like?
Alder, I think that entirely depends on the direction that the council wants to take. But it is, it is obviously a thing that we will work on. Once we have a sense of the direction that we're taking, then we can craft a, a public outreach strategy around that.
I'd agree with that. And add, though, that seeing my colleagues, how we like to do business, oftentimes there are decisions like this of such magnitude that I feel like some would want to have some public outreach. But I'll just like believe that as like a statement and not like a request.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Ladimer-Burz?
Yeah. So I guess I can follow up right on Alder Bennett's statement and question is, you know, I'm new to the council, so I'm just wondering, is this typically what we do? Or was this done last year as far as the budget, where we had the responsibility of deciding what we were going to do? We gave input. Is that how we came to the 1% cut overall?
No, Alder, I think this is unprecedented.
Okay. And then, if we, so whatever decision that we make as a council, it's gonna, it feels like it's going to cycle back to, well, the council wanted to do this, and this is what our values are. And, you know, I'm wondering if we have enough information, which I do appreciate you guys working on that, to make such a, a big decision when it sounds like it was typically just coming from the executive office, and then we were approving or not approving?
Well, Alder, I think this council is clearly, including yourself, has, has clearly articulated a desire to be more engaged in the budget process. So I would say this is your opportunity. And because of the size of the challenge and the range of possible ways of addressing the challenge, again, I wanted, I did not feel comfortable instructing staff to take a certain approach without having some assurance that the council will support it. Otherwise, I could put together an executive budget, staff could do a tremendous amount of work. It is a tremendous amount of work to put together the executive budget. And we could get to November, and you all could say, no way. We don't want to make that level of cut. Or we don't want to go to referendum. So I think it is better for the city as a whole that we collectively have this conversation now, and that you all indicate a direction. I'm not asking you to put together a budget. I'm asking you to indicate a direction that you want to go in. And then staff will take that direction and put together an executive budget that you then will all, again, have the opportunity to amend.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make that clarity because, you know, it sounds like, and again, you've answered this, that, you know, that would be, you know, so say we put together, and we say we're going to do 10% cuts across the board, well, that, that's going to impact all of us alders. And I imagine that the city will say, well, the alders, this is what they wanted to do. And I think part of the reason that we wanted to get more engaged is we started asking a lot of questions this time around this semester, and we didn't have the answers. And we realized we don't even have the knowledge to ask the right questions. So.
That's why we're here.
Yeah. And so now we're here, and we have a short deadline to become, to help to, the city to decide what it's doing. That's all. I just want to recognize that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hengemackenney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This has been an excellent presentation. And I say that because my colleagues have said that, is that I want to circle back around the question of public engagement. It's important for, for us as alders not to make the decision in terms of saying, finance, this is where, this is the direction we want to go, this is the recommendation. There was a time when the finance department held community sessions. And in those community sessions, much what you presented to us was presented to the public in terms of having that kind of input. Is there a possibility where the finance committee could collaboratively, there are 20 alders, so we're not suggesting 20 different presentations, but is there a possibility that we can divide the city up and the city have that public input? So that is really my question. And so I'm, I'm, that's where I'm struggling at, is, is that when we're talking about direction, I would certainly like to have the input of the constituents, the community on this. Certainly, you know, I'm not going to be the one that will be able to answer all the questions that you two have answered even today that might come up. But these are legitimate questions that the public will also have. And I think that they should have an opportunity to weigh in as we move toward, you know, the solution, the possibilities, and all the things that we've talked to tonight. Is that, is that a possibility? Does that make sense? Makes sense to me, but my main us.
Alder, I, yes, you are making sense. And I think the sort of broad answer is absolutely. I think that this year will warrant a much higher level of public engagement than we have done in previous years around the budget. I think that we need to be sort of realistic about the timing of that, given staff capacity. But yes, I think absolutely, we will need to do much broader communications and opportunities for public input. I would suggest, for this sort of immediate first step on that front, obviously, this meeting is recorded, and the videos and the memos are available on the finance website. I think sharing that information out with your constituents and, and asking for their feedback is, would be a great first step. It's not certainly the only thing that we would want to do, but I think it's a great place to start.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Uguer?
This is perhaps more an observation than a question. I'm sitting here scaring myself with the chart that shows, for instance, solving our dilemma with a 27 million referendum, and then noting that because stake requires a flat amount that continues until we have another one, assuming it's not very politically viable to have one every year, a referendum every year, this becomes a multi-year thought process. Because to whatever degree we don't use cost reductions, expense reductions this year, cover it with ref, then we're going to be into it next year. And if we were trying to solve our problem with expense reductions this year, they'll even be more onerous next year, or we've just postponed a referendum. So I just, it seems to me, we almost have to have a view that's somewhat more than a one-budget thing in terms of developing a strategy that's sustainable over a period of time, unless there's some miracle with shared revenue or a sales tax or something like that. So, it wasn't, it wasn't a question. It was an observation. I'll leave it at that.
No, Alder, you're absolutely correct. And that is, you know, I have, I have been trying to move us, and with, you know, substantial support from the finance department, towards having a, a longer-term vision of our operating budget. And I'd like to get to a, sort of a five-year time horizon on that, like we do for our capital. And I think even if something should change at the state level, you know, it won't change next year. It'll change, you know, the year after that, or the year after that. And so we would still want to have that sort of time horizon out. I think your point is very well taken. Alder Knox?
I wasn't going to speak, Mayor, but I just wanted to first thank you for the opportunity to have your staff here provide this outlook. I think, I hope everyone had an opportunity to ask their initial questions. I like your suggestion of looping back to staff with what are the implications of whatever we folks have on our mind. But I just wanted to remind the alders that we pass your budget.
That's right.
So we get the last kick at this can. But I love the opportunity to get involved early, and even we can communicate with our constituents. I'm definitely going to take advantage of, I know one of my groups out here, we're going to, yeah, we have this budget deficit that we got to figure out. And maybe get some feedback from your constituents about, are they willing to, to experience some service cuts? Or do they, are they, would they really pass a referendum? I don't know. But I really just wanted to let you know, I appreciate that. And I think we still have some stuff on our agenda today, too. So, but I just wanted to thank the finance staff and budget staff for this excellent overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Yes, I have no other alders in the queue. So thank you, Dave and Christine.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all of your efforts and more to come. And as the alder said, we do in fact have other items on our agenda. So we will move on now to item 10. Item 10 is Legisstar 81295, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning at 2150 Marty Road, 7751 Midtown Road, and 7342 to 7362 Raymond Road. On item 10, President Curry, a motion, please?
Moved to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Are there questions for staff on item 10? Seeing no questions for staff, is there discussion on item 10? Seeing no discussion on item 10, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 10. That will bring us to item 12. Item 12 is Legisstar 81316, amending sections of the ordinances related to upper-level development standards to clarify how stories are measured in urban design district eight. On item 12, a motion, President Curry?
Adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions? Alder Bennett?
Yes, thank you. So question for planning or urban design, whatever. I'm wondering if, like, they are able to pull up a map of urban design district eight, if that's possible?
Director Stoudt, I believe, is here.
Hi.
Hello, Alder. Yes, I will pull up that map momentarily.
There you go, Alder.
Thank you. I was hoping you could explain this change that's in front of us today.
I will start by saying that I don't believe, well, let's see. Let me, let me back up to an easier-to-see aerial of the Urban Design District 8, which is otherwise known as the Capital East District, just east of downtown. And the, the simple ordinance change that's before the council this evening has to do with just a project that's been approved last month by the Plan Commission on this block here. This is the 700 block of East Washington Avenue. Just for reference, here's the Constellation Building, here's Bree Stevens Field, a couple blocks down. So there's a redevelopment that's been approved here. And this is the general look of that redevelopment. It's a, it's a 14-story building with 244 units. And I believe that the developer is here and willing to answer questions if you have further questions, but just wanted to quickly explain the amendment. It's, it's pretty straightforward. If you look at this portion of the building here, it's a two-story building element. Tucked back behind it are multiple levels of parking, three stories' worth of, of in-building parking, structured parking. And the change simply allows for this portion of the building to count as two stories in Urban Design District 8, rather than counting as three stories, which is, which is the way that our zoning code works. And the reason being is that, you know, based on zoning, this is actually a 15-story building based on zoning, and the way that parking levels are counted within the building, this change simply allows for, in Urban Design District 8, for the number of stories to be based on what's really experienced from East Washington Avenue. And so it's a pretty simple and straightforward change, again, for a 244-unit building that was approved last month by the Plan Commission.
And then, I appreciate that, Heather, and I just wanted to, maybe, maybe I should rephrase my question. I was hoping to understand, like, how this project specifically delivers on more affordable housing, given the additional height that we were, that we approved for this, the height and story that we approved for this project. I'm specifically referencing-
So you're asking about the amendment that the council approved a few meetings ago?
Yes, that the council approved for the four stories in Urban Design District 8.
Sure. If it's possible to reopen a public hearing, I think it would be great to ask Chris Howden that question, or to ask Alder Rummel, perhaps, to address that question?
Um, I mean, if the alder wants to speak to it, certainly, I don't want to-
So that amendment's not before the council this evening?
Yeah.
That was approved a few meetings ago? And I'm not sure exactly how many, how many units the developer had committed to renting below-market rate-
You know what?
-as part of that agreement.
It's okay, I won't, I won't, like, hammer down the hill on that. But looking back at Urban Design District 8, I was wondering if you could, like, pull that map back up, and then, like, if you're able to give, like, a broad overview of those limitations on heights and stories?
Just stay relevant to what's actually before us.
Right, which is, like, allowing this to be two stories instead of three.
So, but let me, I guess, turn to, what's, what's in front of you now is Urban Design District 8. And each block, and actually sub-block, has a different narrative within Urban Design District 8 that defines the height and building stepbacks and setbacks. A lot of this was based on detailed planning that was done well over a decade ago, and has to do with solar access to, to the blocks, largely to the north, in the Tinney-Lapham neighborhood. You know, as you know, from, from this other visual, which I think is even more helpful, we've seen a tremendous amount of redevelopment over the past decade within this area. 12- to 14-story buildings have become the norm in this part of the, the district. And this project on the 700 block would, would be very similar in scale to the buildings that, that it's beside. I think, you know, the, the detailed change that's before the council this evening is really just a technicality, to make sure that in Urban Design District 8, there's no need to count hidden, completely, you know, hidden parking levels as individual stories, and rather, the building that's been proposed and approved can be considered a 14-story building, rather than a 15-story building.
Yep. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for staff on item 12? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on item 12? Seeing Alder Bennett?
Hi, thank you. I pulled this from the consent agenda, because I, and I wanted to make it very clear that I'm highly supportive of this change. I wanted to pass, and I applaud Alder Rummel for following through with the technicalities that needed to be made, and for spearheading this effort, as it would expand affordable housing on this highly-used corridor of East Washington. And I believe it's aptly times, as we are in a housing shortage and urgently need solutions, particularly those for affordable housing, as we just heard what the budget crisis that's caught, that we are in right now, will cause increased costs to rent. And so exploring these solutions are important, and necessary, especially, I wanted to make the point that I, that it would be great that instead of taking a piecemeal approach to this, we look at the full Urban Design District 8 on that cap, that very integral intersection of East Washington, and recognize that it can support additional density. I recognize that years after this design district was approved, East Washington and the Ismus area is thriving with tens of thousands of jobs, access to services, childcare, grocery stores, et cetera. And it is now an area that has high opportunity and is overburdened by limitations in our Urban Design District Code. So even now, there are numerous cranes on East Wash. I live, work, visit my dad, and next to many of them, and these will continue, this will continue to happen, though I am baffled that in many of these districts, it's limited to three stories on East Washington, three stories on East Washington. And this effort that Alder Rummel spearheaded allowed us to go above and beyond that. So I think that this is something that we should review in urgency when updating our Urban Design Code. And I would like to flag it here for staff and my colleagues to spearhead this, to relinquish things in our code that no longer serve, especially in areas like this, that are prime for higher density, and can support this level of opportunity for housing.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel?
Thank you, Alder Bennett, for taking this off the agenda, so we could learn about how the zoning code and the Urban Design District are out of sync. And we are about to amend all of our Urban Design District codes, and as a member of Urban Design, I will be part of that process, and you're all invited to pay attention, and is now underway. But I just wanted to clarify that for this block to be, the underlying height was 10 stories, not three stories. Maybe there are some blocks further out that were shorter, and part of that was that block-by-block planning that we went through a decade ago, that was really quite, I don't know if I would say contested, but we discussed every single block, front and back, on either side of the avenue, in much detail. So, you know, it is the most prescriptive and detailed of all the Urban Design Districts, and it has accomplished amazing things. So I think this is just a technicality, but appreciate your interest in calling out, like, how this is a place for new housing, and I agree. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. It's been moved and seconded on item 12. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record, oh, Alder, Alder Knox will abstain. So seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote with Alder Knox abstaining. And that will take us to item 18. Item 18 is Legisstar 81581, change of license conditions for McTaggart's Incorporated. And on item 18, President Curry, a motion, please?
Move to re-refer to the ALRC meeting of February 22nd?
22nd?
March 20th.
21st. February 21st.
February 21st.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Are there questions for staff? Is there discussion? Alder Bennett?
Do we need to add a specific, do we need to add, like, a specific, like, reason why we're sending it back? Like, we're sending, we're referring it with direction of XYZ?
Alder, it can't hurt to signal, it never hurt to signal legislative intent.
Okay. As the alder of this district, I've spoken with Rick, the owner, a few times about this, and it is very clear, with his intent is to sell, the sale of spirit-based hard seltzer sold in, like, single-use cans or stuff, like, his intention is not to sell bottles of alcohol or anything in the, for context, this is, like, in the air, in the neighborhood of, like, like, down towards Langdon area. It's, I don't know, it's like, corner store kind of thing. So I am confident that in sending this back to ALRC, they will make that very, that abundantly clear, and alongside the, about his intentions, and, or the owner's intentions. So I will move to refer to ALRC with the request that the ALRC develop a standard and equitable condition to address the sale of spirit-based hard seltzers.
Is there any objection with that being the motion? Seeing no objection, that's the motion. And it's been seconded. Are there, is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral. And that will take us to item 23. Item 23 is Legisstar 81376, authorizing a non-competitive service contract for the evaluation of the CARES program. On item 23, President Curry, a motion, please?
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt, item 23. Are there questions for staff? Alder Tischler?
Yeah, I have a question for Assistant Chief Stedman, if he's still with us.
Chief Stedman is here.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that Harvard's a fine school, but I guess my question is, why, why would they be awarded a non-competitive? There must be other, I mean, other universities in the country that can do the same.
Chief Stedman?
Hi, good evening. Yeah, so I, I think the, the main reason that we wanted to go with a non-competitive for this was because we've been working with the Harvard GPL for the last nine months. We had a one-year technical assistance grant, along with the county, to help us build up the CARES program. The technical assistance includes meeting every week with other programs around the country to talk about best practices. They're helping us develop, you know, long-term strategic planning, policies, protocols, and, and things of that sort. So because we have this existing relationship for the past nine months, that, that was why we chose the Harvard GPL, because they were, they seem to be positioned best to do this comprehensive evaluation for us. And they already know so much about us, and so much about all of the other good programs in the country. So that's kind of the baseline reason.
If I can ask another quick follow-up. This is just, this is just one-time funding?
That's correct.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington-McKinney, questions?
Yes, thank you very much. My second question, well, my question is, would you just say a little bit more about the evaluation? I can, you alluded to it, but I'd like to hear the reasoning, specifically because we had someone question the $150,000 based upon our deficit. So could you, could you just kind of briefly walk us through why this is important, why you're doing it at this point?
Yeah, certainly. You know, there's a reasonable expectation from the community that we're evaluating this, this program, of course, being that it's new to the city, and, and really, this model of alternative response is newer around the country, and it's really starting to take hold, and, and there's, there's a lot of evaluations going on out there, but there's not a lot of really good research right now, a lot of good data for us to compare to. You know, we have a lot of conversations around what's best practice, and what we think is, is really what's right to do, but we really need a comprehensive evaluation, not just of the operations that we have on the street with our CARES team, but an evaluation that includes the 911 center from the very beginning. So the, the call takers in the 911 center, the questions they're asking, how they triage those calls to the CARES team. And then, of course, there is the operational piece of, you know, are our providers doing what's clinically best for the community? Are the interventions appropriate? Are the resources that we're using in the community appropriate? And then we also want to evaluate what it looks like to follow up with people when Journey Mental Health contacts people after our interventions with them. And, you know, and, and really, the big thing is trying to track people downstream a little bit, understand better about customer satisfaction, and about the, the real implications of this program, and what it has in the community. So, you know, honestly, these ARPA funds were in public health for quite a while, for some, for a purpose around some sort of evaluation like this, and so we just wanted to take the opportunity to use those funds in, in the most effective way possible. And, you know, I, I can agree with Mrs. Rowe that spoke earlier, that there are probably other programs in the city, homeless service programs, that could benefit from an evaluation as well. And I don't want to take anything away from those programs, but we certainly feel that that CARES would be appropriate for this evaluation, and it's needed.
Or is it too late to add my name as a sponsor?
We can add you as a sponsor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions?
Yeah, I guess my question goes back to having this non-competitive contract. So you, I, I believe you said that this school did some of the, what, technical work previously?
Technical assistance, yeah. We were currently receiving a technical assistance grant from them. It's a one-year grant. We're about nine months in.
All right. But you also mentioned that other schools and other schools were participating in this. So I guess I'm wondering, with this being over, I think there's a $50,000 threshold, why would you not go out for a bid on something like this?
So when I was talking about the other programs, it's not necessarily other schools doing evaluations, it's other programs are evaluating themselves. Right, we're, we're all evaluating ourselves, and there's a lot of conversation out there right now around the fact that there hasn't been a lot of year-long, years-long research, really kind of focused on this alternative response. We look at, at literature, there, there's just not a lot out there. So there, there, in my mind, there aren't a lot of schools like this doing this exact type of evaluation, but there's so many programs that need this evaluation, I guess is the way I should have put it. You know, we're, we're all doing our best to, to provide the best services possible, and, and evaluating these kind of mental health interventions is, is, is more complicated than the fire department can take on themselves. Certainly not our expert, our expertise to do a, you know, a good comprehensive evaluation from start to finish. and evaluating these kind of mental health interventions is, is, is more complicated than the fire department can take on themselves. Certainly not our expert, our expertise to do a, you know, a good comprehensive evaluation from start to finish. So, so I guess the, the bottom line is, is because we had done so much work with the Harvard Government Performance Lab, and they know us so well, that it was, it was going to be a much easier transition to work with them, because we've been with them for nine months than it would be to go out and find someone new that doesn't know anything about our program.
Okay. So is there, like, contracting staff or something available that can talk about procedurally?
The finance director can probably speak to your question.
Okay. I just wanted to just make sure that, that, that we're, if there are other people who could very well provide this same expertise, are we following the appropriate procedure? Or does this fit the criteria of justification for a non-contractual agreement?
So there is a contract. I believe there was a, we have a process where the department that requests to take this approach fills out a form. I think that's attached to the, the resolution item.
Yep.
And then ultimately, it's up to the council to decide to, to take a path of a, of sort of a non-RFP process, if, if it so chooses, based on what the agency is requesting.
Okay, I see on the form it says, it's checked, the services or goods required are available from only one person or firm, and then the other criteria is the services are to be rendered by, you know, and this is an educational institution. So how will we know that there aren't other educational institutions that can, that might be interested in this?
We don't unless you, we do an RFP process. You know, I think that's a decision that the fire department has made, that this is, they think it's the best approach, and now they brought it to you as a council to affirm that approach.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Assistant Chief Stedman. So my question is, well, I think it's a great idea that this is going to get evaluated, but my question is, is what is, what are we looking for, or what is going to determine that this has been a successful program, or that we want this program to continue?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's honestly what needs to be answered and figured out, but when we go through this evaluation process, there is, depending on, on the, whether you're talking to the community about this, or whether you're talking to the hospital systems, or the police department, or the jails, everybody sees success in a different way. I simply see success as us being able to provide, you know, appropriate mental health care for non-violent behavioral health emergencies, and provide, of course, the appropriate referrals to the community afterwards. And so, you know, success is, is, for me, is, you know, making sure that, that we're doing the best as a, you know, to, for the community here. So, but there's going to be, you know, the, the Harvard GPL has, has a lot of points laid out and what the evaluation could look like, and they met with, with Ariel Smith and Public Health to look over more the details of what the evaluation will exactly look like. And I apologize, I don't have anything in front of me right now, but I can, you know, once we do a little bit more work, or if we do, are going to do this work with them, you know, I'll be able to report back on exactly what the evaluation is going to entail.
And I wonder, too, if maybe we could get a copy of the things that they're going to be looking at, or evaluating, or their point system? If all the alders could get a hang, hold of that, I think that would probably be beneficial as well.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I, I'm interested to see what that's going to look like as well.
All right. Well, we'll be hoping to look at it together then. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitiver?
So you mentioned that we would be, the evaluation would look at, from the entire process, from when the call comes into the 911 center, all the way through follow-up. So my question is, is we just recently at least allocated funding for mental health, mental health counselors within the 911 center with the goal of not even having to send folks out? I don't know if they've been hired yet, but my question is really, is, is there going to be a period of time where there's going to be evaluation without those folks, and then a period with those folks? Or is it only going to hit the ti, the period of time before those folks have been added to the 911 center?
Yeah, great question. I, I don't know exactly where they are in the hiring process and the whole process of adding those new call takers that are more clinicians and have the mental health history. So I apologize, I can't give you a timeframe. I'm guessing that there will be probably a little bit of both. You know, I don't know when the, exactly the, the evaluation period is going to start, but it'll be for one year. So, you know, if, if we're able to get it started within the next couple of months, we will certainly be evaluating the program without those call takers, because I don't think that they'll be trained and actually taking those calls in the next couple of months. So it's hard to say, because I don't know the timeframe specifically, but we're going to evaluate a one-year period regardless of what, of where the 911 center is in their process.
And then my second question is, is what, how long do you think it would delay being able to start the evaluation if you had to go to an open RFP?
You know, I don't have a lot of history and experience in, in this exact type process, but I have to imagine it's going to cause months of delay. Like I mentioned, the Harvard GPL already has so much information about us that it's going to make that process, in my opinion, quite a bit easier to get started with us here. But I, but I, that whole RFP process could take anywhere, and I'm sure Dave Schmidt, he can maybe answer this better, but it, it can take, it could take months, and then, you know, depending on, on who's going to answer it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Quick question, or a couple of quick questions. First is, can I be added to as a sponsor to this? Second being, this was briefly discussed, but the evaluation and the details of it, I was going to ask about whether it's going to cover demographics and stuff like that of who uses it, but that's all TBD, correct?
Well, yeah, and we, and we're already gathering all of that sort of data, and we, you know, you'll see that we're able to produce a quarterly alder report. And that, the, the information in that alder report is pretty thin down compared to the overall information that we're collecting. So we, we've got all the demographic data collected from day one, September 1st, 2021, up to this point. So it's, it's, and it's not, of course, it's beyond demographic data, it's, you know, response times from the 911 center, how many calls happen per day of the week, what the geographic locations are. So we've, we've got a warehouse of data ready to be evaluated, and this, this happened a little while ago, but we initially had a data analyst in public health as part of the CARES program and the CARES budget, and we lost that person after about one year. He moved on to a different job in a different state. So we, we have really been limited in our ability to evaluate the data, but we're still collecting all of it.
Okay, perfect. And I will say, the alder reports for CARES has been splendid, it has been very helpful. The tough part that I have with this is, in my district specifically, UW Madison has a very similar program, and they kind of overlap in a way. So I'm curious if this evaluation will look at their data at all? I don't know if that's something we have access to or can get access to.
Yeah, that's, it's a great question, and I have no idea if we would get access to it either. You know, the, the UW Police Department does use CARES when needed. The, the program they have there is similar, but it's, it's very limited. I believe they're only in service a couple of days a week right now, and they have a co-response program where a behavioral health professional from University Health Services goes out with the police department. So evaluating their program would look different than it would be for evaluating CARES in many ways, because it's, it's a co-response with law enforcement. But, but we do see UW students on it, that are responded to by the CARES team as well. So we're collecting data about the, about the UW. But yeah, great question about whether or not we could help to evaluate their current program as well.
All right, perfect. Thank you. And then when it comes to, I, I will come up with a lot of questions for this, but instead of doing that in the spot, would like a point-of-contact person for this be you, or would it be someone for the Harvard, from the Harvard College when it comes to this evaluation?
Yeah, it'll be me for now. I'm retiring in July. My replacement has been named, so.
No.
It'll, it'll be me or someone else. I know, I'm sorry. But, but yeah, and I know that our public health office has, has quite a bit of information about this as well. Ariel Smith is, is, is read in on this and understands the evaluation probably better than I do.
Right, thank you. And I know you can't see this room, maybe, but there is quite a reaction to you saying you're going to retire.
Chief, the consensus of the council is that you're not allowed to retire.
Yes, Mayor.
Other questions? Thank you.
Alder Harrington-McKinnon, questions?
Yes, thank you for drawing that out, Alder. So I asked to be a sponsor of this because I'm aware of, the city approves a lot of the funding for programs without any significant evaluation of the program effectiveness. And for this program, which on the surface is, is, is just a rock star, but you going back, and I'm saying you, but going back and, and measuring the effectiveness so that you can say that this works, this did not work, it's exactly what should happen. And so I commend you for the CARES program, because it is very popular and well, well accepted, but the details in terms of what that effectiveness is, looks like, where it's, it needs showing up, or where it doesn't, and that's how you find that out. So that's why I wanted to be a sponsor of it, because the, the fact that you have something to report back to the body, and your quarterly reports have been excellent. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa-Cole, questions?
So I guess, thank you for being here this late. My apologies for keeping you here this late, but, so this came to the Board of Public Health, and most of the questions asked here were actually addressed at the, at the Board of Public Health. So, and especially around the, the context of the, of the survey, so, of, you know, the evaluation. So, I mean, I guess for me, just wanted to emphasize again the 911 part of this. Like, to me, that's like the, the entry point of, of this program, and, I mean, I don't even have a question, but just emphasize that this is the 911 is the entry point, and this group is already working, is already in the inside of the operations on 911. So to, to not take advantage of that is really wasteful time and resources. That's why, I mean, that's how I was, we, we discussed that at the, at the board, why this is the best option for this particular, this company is the best option for this particular evaluation. So I guess my question is, don't you agree with that, just to throw a question out there, I guess?
Thank you, Alder.
So.
Yeah, I'll just say briefly, I completely agree, and, and the 911 center has had representatives in the meetings with us every, every week when we meet with the Harvard GPL for the last nine months, and, and the 911 center has benefited greatly from them, for, from their help as well. And so, yeah, we, we understand the need to make sure that the 911 center is a key part of the evaluation.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I also like to be added as a co-sponsor, but my question really just is ensuring or wanting to know that the evaluation will include or sort of look at what kind of technology, your technology needs might be? You know, do you have effective technology? Is the technology you're currently using needs to be replaced? You know, is it growing, is it expanding? What would make your job quicker, more efficient, you know, around technique? So I'm just hoping that that part is covered, too.
And it, it will be. It's, it's already been a big part of the conversations that we've had with him over the past nine months, and it, it'll continue to be, because it really does matter. There, there's a lot of really interesting kind of mobile health tools to use, you know, using iPads, for instance, to talk with providers. There's, there's a, there's a whole world of technology out there that we're just kind of scratching the surface with, so I agree.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue with questions. It has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder Figueroa-Cole?
Just again, a couple seconds to say, I mean, I am, District 10 has three different police districts, so I get to go and visit their supervisor meetings three times and, and interact with, with them over the year. So I have to say, almost in every conversation, the CARES program comes up, and they want more of it. They want more at the, at the third shift level, they want, they are so grateful for, for having that level of support. So whatever we need to make, to do to ensure that we show to the public the value of this service, not only in the city of Madison, but on the municipalities around us, and the county, they, they better. So I'm already sponsoring this, so you don't have to tell me, but again, to say thank you, and I just wanted to pass along the feedback that I had gotten from MPD, which is a constant when it comes to CARES. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, I just want everybody to know I support the CARES program and its expansion. I think they're doing what the council intended for them to do. I guess my concern really has to do with the non-competitive bid process, and is this the sole source? When you talk about research at educational institutions, I would think you would have other institutions who do public research in, probably in this area, and I just think we need to make sure we're doing our due diligence on competitive bid processes. You know, maybe because the funds are what they are, it's easy to want to expend those funds and say, okay, we'll find, I, I understand you, you have a, a technical contract with people you're familiar with, that makes sense, but I still think it's too easy not to go out there. That's why we have this process for things that are over $50,000 to do a bid. I don't think it takes that long to do a RFP, get it out there, see who responds. We might actually, as was suggested, have a local, a program that might be interested. So I'm not going to support this, because I just think we need to make sure that we are, you know, following our process when we have the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. So really, just in the, sort of along the lines of what Alder Figueroa-Cole shared, I just want to say thank you for the service, because I was able to use or had to really use CARES for a family member, and because I had that experience, I was better able to sort of like describe for other folks who may reach out with a family member who was having some sort of crisis. So, you know, it's, it's good to be able to comfortably share with someone that a service works in the way that it works, so you kind of like minimize some of their fear in the process about reaching out to CARES, for example. So I'm supporting it for that, because I get to see it work, you know, live on a regular basis. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
I'm calling the question, please.
No other alders? One other alder in the queue? Alder Tischler?
Yeah, no, I, I support the CARES program, and I'm looking forward to reading the evaluation. I've already disclosed where I work, so I'm going to have to probably abstain on this one.
Thank you, Alder. We'll note you as abstaining on this item. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. It's been moved and seconded, with the exception of Alder Tischler. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Knox will be out noted as voting no. Any other? If not, item 23 will pass, and that will bring us to item 42. Item 42 is Legisstar 81625, authoring, authorizing amendments to the Youth Homeless Demonstration Program funded contracts. On item 42, President Curry?
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions on item 42? Seeing no questions, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Knox? Alder Knox abstain, or, Alder Knox, we noted as voting no. Seeing other objection, that item will pass, and that is the end of the items that were excluded from the consent agenda. Are there any introductions from the floor at this time? Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yes, I'm introducing.
Yes, I'm introducing, I don't know if I have a number yet for it, though. Maybe the clerk has a number.
82079, Alder.
I'm sorry?
82079.
82079. So I just introduced a resolution from the floor requesting, directing, and authorizing the Finance Department to research, view, analyze, update potential increase in revenue options specifically to sales tax. So it'll be in, coming back for, because it's from the floor, introduction on 35.
I'm sorry, Alder, can you read the title of the item again?
I don't have the exact title.
You need to have an exact title to introduce an item.
Okay, let me just do this. Just a second. It's in my email, just a minute, let me pull it up here. 30 seconds, I apologize to my colleagues. Okay, so it's by title only, 82079, directing the Finance Department to issue a report analyzing providing findings on options to increase revenue. And then I have it going to the EOC 314, Finance 326, and back to Council 416.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Knox. All right. Is there any discussion on the introduction? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of introduction? Seeing no objection, the item is introduced. Are there any additional introductions from the floor or announcements? Happy birthday to Alder Bennett and Alder Wajilehe, this is your turn. Moved, moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.